Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor of Tabitha Baptist Church, J.L. Mitchell.
Shall we pray? Our Father God, we come this morning to thank you for your goodness and grace. We ask your tender mercy to continue to shine down upon us. We pray your blessings over the decision-makers of our city. Continue to give them wisdom and knowledge to help those who are in need of help, to help the poor, the downtrodden, and those who really feel there is no hope. We pray for these proceedings, that your name would even be glorified in all that is said and done. We already thank you, Father, and we know that you're God of love and tender mercies. So we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We are on item three, Office of the Mayor. And it's a little lonely up here, so we'd like to fill some chairs. And so we're going to have some swearing-in ceremonies. And I welcome everybody here. Where are you every other Tuesday morning? You're most welcome to return. We'll do this in numerical order. And so that means we will begin with James Cooper from Ward Two. James, if you would come forward. I understand you have previously received an official oath from County Commissioner Kerry Blumer, but we are going to do an oath for the audience led by your mother, Klyce Cooper. So if you would come forward to the podium and just begin when you are ready.
My mother, everybody.
I, James F. Cooper,
I, James F. Cooper,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support the Constitution,
that I will support the Constitution,
and the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America,
and the laws of the United States of America,
and the Constitution and the laws of
and the Constitution and the laws,
of the state of Oklahoma,
of the state of Oklahoma,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
according to the best of my abilities,
according to the best of my abilities,
the duties of my office or employment,
the duties of my office or employment,
during such time as I am,
during such time as I am,
councilmember of Ward Two of the City of Oklahoma City,
councilmember of Ward Two of the City of Oklahoma City,
and trustee,
and trustee,
of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust,
of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust,
the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority,
the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority,
and the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority,
and the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Say a few words, Councilman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the other honorable members of our City Council, and to everyone here who took time out of your mornings and work to be here, thank you. It is my honor to represent Ward Two. First, a few quick thank-yous. Erin Wilder, for being my campaign manager, for being someone I've known since 2011. As I said last night at the walk, I love you, man. I saw Brian Brown here, and thank you for the wonderful words you helped me put together during this campaign. It was a pleasure. If Jeff Bezdek is here, please know you have my heart as well. Every volunteer who knocked doors with me. I mean, we knocked about 4,000 of those doors and spoke to about 2,000 people. Tasneem, my deputy campaign manager, you'll rock. I just want to say thank you to my mother, retired registered nurse, someone who told me that I would always be whatever I wanted to be, and she would be there at my side so long as it wasn't a murderer. And even then. I just want to say thank you to every neighborhood in Ward Two. I live in the Paseo, the first commercial district outside of downtown. And I moved there because the original vision of having sidewalks out the front door and streetlights guiding you to the basic needs of the individual was something that my mother had told me about growing up in Texarkana on our main streets there. And something my father would talk about growing up in Tom and Idabel, Oklahoma. And I used to hate all that and be like, "I want a big city away from that." And what I found out is that a big city is made up of all those little main streets. And so from Paseo to the Western Village Pied Piper to Camelot, all the way to the Windsor District and Skyline, I hear you. And even though you couldn't be here today, I am proud to represent you as the next Ward Two councilperson. Thank you. And to Jefferson Middle School statesmen.
Councilman Cooper, you sit up here now. Come on up here. Now we will proceed to the swearing-in of Councilman David Greenwell. David will be sworn in. The oath will be administered by Municipal Judge Donald Kiffin.
I state your name.
I, David Greenwell.
Do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support,
that I will support,
obey,
obey,
and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma,
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma,
and that I will not,
and that I will not,
knowingly receive,
knowingly receive,
directly or indirectly,
directly or indirectly,
any money,
any money,
or other valuable thing,
or other valuable thing,
for the performance or non-performance,
for the performance or non-performance,
of any act or duty,
of any act or duty,
pertaining to my office,
pertaining to my office,
other than the compensation,
other than the compensation,
allowed by law,
allowed by law,
I further affirm,
I further affirm,
that I will faithfully discharge,
that I will faithfully discharge,
my duties,
my duties,
as councilmember,
as councilmember,
of Ward Five,
of Ward Five,
of the City of Oklahoma City,
of the City of Oklahoma City,
and as trustee,
and as trustee,
of the Oklahoma City,
of the Oklahoma City,
Environmental Assistance Trust,
Environmental Assistance Trust,
the Oklahoma City,
the Oklahoma City,
Municipal Facilities Authority,
Municipal Facilities Authority,
and the Oklahoma City,
and the Oklahoma City,
Public Property Authority,
Public Property Authority,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
congratulations, Councilman David Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Judge Kiffin, we get to see each other every Saturday, and it's a pleasure just to know him. He represents the municipal courts in the City of Oklahoma City extremely well. I want to give a double thank you to my wife, who serves this past election as both my campaign manager, and we were still married during that time. So she gets double pay for those few weeks. And certainly all the residents of Ward Five and the council and all the staff here in Oklahoma City, thank you very much.
Now we'll welcome to the podium, JoBeth Hammond of Ward Six. Her oath will be administered by County Commissioner Kerry Blumer. Proceed when you are ready.
I, JoBeth Hammond,
I, JoBeth Hammond,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and that I will not
that I will not
knowingly receive
knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing
for the performance or non-performance
for the performance or non-performance
of any act or duty pertaining to my office
of any act or duty pertaining to my office
other than the compensation allowed by law
other than the compensation allowed by law
I further affirm
I further affirm
that I will faithfully discharge my duties
that I will faithfully discharge my duties
as councilwoman of Ward Six of the City of Oklahoma City
as councilwoman of Ward Six of the City of Oklahoma City
and as trustee
and as trustee
of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust
of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust
the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority
the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority
and the Oklahoma City
and the Oklahoma City
Public Property Authority
Public Property Authority
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
congratulations.
Whew, okay, I'm glad that's over. I just want to say thank you first to my parents for being here and to my spouse, Marty, for always being there for me. I can't say too much else without crying. And I just want to thank everyone who supported me when it didn't seem like I was worth supporting. I wasn't well-known, I didn't have a name or lots of money, but you took a chance on me, and I really appreciate it. Thank you to all of Ward Six for voting in the end here. And I hope to be a voice for all of those who have been underheard in our city. Thank you.
And finally, we have Ward Eight, Councilman Mark Stonecypher. His oath of office will be administered by Supreme Court Justice Noam Girich.
I, Mark K. Stonecypher,
I, Mark K. Stonecypher,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and that I will not knowingly
and that I will not knowingly
receive directly or indirectly
receive directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing
for the performance or non-performance
for the performance or non-performance
of any act
of any act
or duty
or duty
pertaining to my office
pertaining to my office
other than the compensation
other than the compensation
allowed by law
allowed by law
I further swear
I further swear
that I will faithfully discharge
that I will faithfully discharge
my duties
my duties
as councilmember
as councilmember
of Ward Eight
of Ward Eight
of the City of Oklahoma City
of the City of Oklahoma City
and as trustee
and as trustee
of the Oklahoma City
of the Oklahoma City
Environmental Assistance Trust
Environmental Assistance Trust
the Oklahoma City
the Oklahoma City
Municipal Facilities Authority
Municipal Facilities Authority
and the Oklahoma City
and the Oklahoma City
Public Property Authority
Public Property Authority
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
About a week ago, I was in the parking garage where I park, and a person that parks near me walked over and said, "You know, with all the change that's occurred in the last year at City Hall, are you scared? Are you nervous about it?" And I looked him right in the eye and I said, "I am so excited about the future of the city." And one of the reasons I'm so excited is that we have five people on this horseshoe that are 40 years of age or less. They have new dreams, new ideas, new thoughts. I've already heard some of them. One of the best ones, James and JoBeth and I were at a luncheon, and James had this idea. I just thought it was great. He said, "Let's get together some Saturday, have coffee, we'll drive your ward and we'll drive my ward." I never thought of that. What a great idea. I get to go see his ward and go see JoBeth's ward. I mean, it's a great idea. I get great ideas from Nikki. Nikki is what I call our historian. She tells history stories at almost every time we meet. And if you don't understand your history, you can't improve your future. And so today, I have a little history for you. We have the Chief Justice of the Oklahoma Supreme Court here. Do you know her, Nikki? And she was a political science history major. So she's a history buff, too. And I hope she doesn't get mad at me for telling this, but I am going to tell it. And I think it's really important historically. She was in the class of 1978, the College of Law. That year, there were 45 women out of 216 total students. That's only 20%. In 2019, last year's graduating class, it had jumped to 42.8%, almost 43%. And that's big. In the class of 1978, the College School of Law, there were nine minorities out of 216 total students. In 2019, we increased that five-fold, from 2% to 21.1%. And that's a big deal. James said it, I read in the paper, it takes a while to progress, to make progress. And we have improved those numbers, but we have a lot of work to do. I do want to thank the Chief Justice for being here. I think it's important to understand her career and how successful she's been. She started out in a completely male-dominated profession, and she went to the Workers' Comp Court, to the District Court, and all the way to be the Chief Justice of the Oklahoma Supreme Court. I'm very proud of you. I admire you. And I think we should give her a big hand for being here today. I want to thank, I have this beautiful picture on a campaign card with my mother and I. My mom is 88 years old. She's here today. The only problem we ever have with her is once in a while she still gets a speeding ticket in her 80s. Other than that, she's the most beautiful mother anyone could ever have. I have my son Sean here today, who I'm so proud of, and I'm glad he could be here today. And I have my lovely wife Debbie, who listens to me rambling on like this every night and usually listens. I'm excited about the future. I'm excited about the work we're going to do today. So let's have a good day and let's get busy.
You are all welcome to stay, but this is traditionally a time when a lot of people leave. So feel free to do something. All right. I think we'll resume our agenda. We are still under item three, Office of the Mayor. We have item B now. Appointment of Anthony Carfeng Jr. to serve as a member of the Citizens Capital Improvement Sales Tax Advisory Board. This is the board that oversees Better Streets, Safer City. This was a recommendation of new Councilman James Cooper. And this is filling a vacancy. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We also have item 3C. This is the appointment of Mark K. Stonecypher to serve as a member of the MAPS III Citizen Advisory Board. The way the Citizens Advisory Board was set up originally was to always have a council member on it, and that position rotates. And Councilwoman Nice has done a great job the last few months on the MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board, but the year is up, and so now it is going to be Councilman Stonecypher. Pending a motion. Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We've got items A and B, which we can take with one motion. Did I hear a second? Hey, you know, with Meg gone, people are going to have to pick up the motions a little bit here. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're at item five, Requests for Uncontested Continuances in addition to item 11A. Is there anything else to be stricken or deferred, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, we have several. And all of these that I'm going to list are on to strike from the agenda. The first item is on page 21, under the dilapidated structures. It's item number 9H1, and it's I, and it's 512 Southwest 47th Street. The owner is removed. Under page, on page 22-
Item L, actually.
L, I'm sorry. That's my eyes. Page 22, Unsecured Structures, item number 9J1E, 2400 South Harvey Avenue. The owner is secured. H, 1912 Southwest 10th Street. The owner is secured. L, 1181 Southeast 19th Street. The owner is secured. M, 813 Southwest 24th Street. To re-notify the owner. Item N, 221 Southwest 32nd Street. The owner is secured. Under abandoned buildings, item number 9K1L, 813 Southwest 24th Street. Is to re-notify the owner. Item N, 221 Southwest 32nd Street. The owner is secured. And then we also have on page 24, under the Claims Recommended for Denial, item 901E. And we're going to strike that item. We've got a settlement on that, and that's going to come back on the 23rd.
Harry with three R's.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, this brings us to item six, Revocable Permits. We have item 6A. This is a revocable permit with One World Lantern Festival LLC for the Oklahoma City One World Lantern Festival 2019. Councilman Greiner? I don't think anyone has signed up to speak.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 6B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Southwest 29th Business Improvement District Association to hold Southwest 29th Street Children's Day Festival, Dia Del Niño, on April 14th. Councilman Stone?
Thank you. Is anyone present that wants to talk about this? I will quickly. It's on Southwest 29th Street between Western and Chartel. It's the Dia Del Niño, basically a festival celebrating children. It's April 14th, and it's noon to 5:00. So feel free to come out and enjoy a good time. Very family-friendly, a lot of great food, just a great atmosphere. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're going to recess the council meeting. We now convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. This is a body that has the same membership as the City Council, but with different authorities. And there we have items A through D that we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to page three of your printed agenda. We will now adjourn OCMFA and convene as the- We will now adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, another body with the same membership as the council, where we have Items A through D that we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCPPA, and we will convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, another body with the same membership as the council, but with different authorities, where we only have claims and payroll, which debatably doesn't need a vote, but we're going to do it anyways. I hear a motion in a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page 4 of your printed agenda, Item 7, the Consent Docket. And we have some presentations, but is there anything that anybody wants to pull out or talk about?
A, B.
Okay.
U, and AW.
U. And AW. Anything on this side? Okay. All right, we will take them in order as well as... Okay. We have resolved that, and now we are going to take these in order. We do have a presentation, this wasn't mentioned, but we also will have a few presentations as well, and we'll start with Item 7B on the Consent Docket.
Yes, Captain Beto Baldarama, this is not Paco, and Chief City are here to present on the False Alarm Permits Program, and it's a contract and on an ordinance change that we have later on in the agenda, so I-
Correct, so, yeah, it's been fun for me to stand out here and watch everybody say, "Congratulations, Paco." Just promoted Paco to Deputy Chief next week, so this is-
A very fine officer in your own right.
That's right, that's right.
Exactly. I don't want to diminish his capabilities at all by saying that. Both of them are outstanding officers in their own right, and we've had, actually had Beto working on the alarms, really the alarm permit process for over a year, because it just hasn't, it just hasn't worked. We've had it for probably maybe 16, 17 years now. I'm still suffering a little bit from PTSD from working on the first one, the original one. So if I shake or something, you'll know why that's what it is for, so. But he worked on that, and he's going to first explain to you exactly what we're planning on doing and outsourcing this process, and then I'll talk a little bit about the ordinance changes that we are also planning.
Good morning, thank you very much for having me here. The city auditor completed an alarm program audit in 2017. We concluded that we found a few deficiencies and to refer for improvement with alarm program. In 2017, and correction, 2016, we had already started researching the possibility of contracting with a false alarm management company. These companies provide management services and alarm programs nationwide. They provide services for major cities such as Houston, Dallas, Oakland, and Denver, and they're very successful with their alarm programs. Our research concluded that outsourcing the alarm program was probably our best option, and it would greatly improve the process and frankly provide a better service for our customers, our citizens. Seven items that really helped the alarm program progress with such alarm companies are the online capabilities of registration, payment, cancellation, and customer service. Everything can be done online. We get so many phone calls from folks with a new house, or they just moved, or they're renting a property, they want to get a permit, and we give them the process of coming downtown, finding parking, and coming inside and paying for it, and they don't show up. And this will really increase our permit complacency rate. Prompt administrative fee invoicing, what this means is, once you get excessive false alarms, we send you an invoice. Well, these folks are really good at it. Two-day mail-out, you get your invoice, explain to you you have a false alarm and you need to pay it. We're nowhere close to that, and this really affects what we bring in regarding those invoices. The elimination of our current processing vendor, which frankly, they're not doing a great job, and we're paying them top dollar, we no longer need them. Customer outreach for non-permitted alarms. Anytime we respond to a home or business that does not have an alarm permit, they reach out to them immediately, give them the process, tell them how to get a permit, so they can be in compliance. Staffing reduction in the alarm program. We've located two positions that we can use them somewhere else a lot better in our police department. We don't need them. If we go with this company, we no longer need them in the alarm program. The increase of permit registration compliance is also a big deal. These folks have cities up to 90, 95 percent permit complacency. We're nowhere in that ballpark. And finally, the reduction of false alarms. They provide training videos, tips how to reduce false alarms for business owners and homeowners. Completed an RFP in 2018, and Cry Wolf by Superior was awarded the contract. Cry Wolf has 19 years of experience and owns Tritech. Tritech is the current computer program that we use in 911 Dispatch, so we know their data, their systems, their computers, for lack of a better term, will work with what we have right now to dispatch calls. Also, cities like Dallas, Honolulu, Atlanta, and New Orleans have Tritech and have Cry Wolf, and they've been really successful. Cry Wolf also provides these type of services for about 325 municipalities and 150 law enforcement agencies just like ours. Their monthly fee will be 27 percent of our alarm revenue, but most cities have double complacency, which brings in more for the alarm programs, so it can recover our costs that we lose when we check these false alarms. Any questions, please?
Councilman Greiner?
Yes, is, currently, is there a way for individuals or businesses to check, to see if they do have an active alarm permit?
Yes, sir. They just call our permits and ID office, and they can try to check for that.
Can they go online to check that?
They cannot, sir.
Okay. Well, just a suggestion, if we could maybe improve the compliance with respect to getting all the alarms registered, if we could include that on the water bills and other types of communications from the city, just to remind individuals especially, but also businesses.
And that's one of the things in the contract, within the contract, that they'll actually be actively reaching out in different ways, and that's another way that we can look at, but actively reaching out to remind people to update their alarm.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. And Chief, this is also going to relate, this presentation will be somewhat applicable to a later item, right? An ordinance change?
That's correct. We also have, we're also proposing an ordinance change that's later on in the agenda.
It's on 9G.
9G, so, but it's related, obviously related to what we're trying to do here by going, outsourcing the whole process, and making it better, making it more countable. Let me just kind of put, I'd like to throw out just a couple figures to explain to you why we need to make these changes, both outsourcing and the permit. Currently, we have 33,000 permits in the city of Oklahoma City. We estimate, we estimate there's about 112,000 businesses and houses out there that do not have permits but have alarms. That's significant. We get 57,000 alarms through our dispatch annually. We should respond to actually 40, 40-something thousand of those alarms. Out of those 57,000 alarms, 71 percent of them do not have a permit. And that's, 98 percent of those alarms are false when we arrive. So those are the things we're trying, we thought we could do years and years ago with what we've been trying to get the permit process, because the idea is not raising funds or doing anything like that. The idea is compliance, so that we can better respond, and our officers aren't wasting their time out there running on false alarms. They're taking other calls, because that is taking a lot of manpower and a lot of time, and a lot of them are false. And the officers end up knowing that, so they end up taking their time even getting there, because they know in most cases it's not going to be a good alarm. So those are just a few figures that I want to throw out to you. Now, the ordinance change, the ordinance change itself deals with really just three pri, about three primary issues. First, it's going to allow for restricted response, which means if you don't have, if you don't have a permit, for one, if you don't get a permit initially, we're not responding. We will have the permit in the system, and that's what Tritech's so important, because it's in our CAD system. If you don't have that permit, we're not coming, we're not responding to your alarm. If you have a permit, we will always respond to your alarm, always, no matter what. So the other, the other part, the other thing in it, and I can talk a little bit more about that if you have questions about it, but the other part is, we've exempted some entities like public schools, government buildings, you know, those types of public entities that have alarms, and we've exempted them from the fees. You might think of them as fines, but they're not actually criminal, they're fees if you have false alarms. So we're exempting those entities like schools and things like that from those excessive false alarms. The other part of it, the other part of it is, it eliminates the master, the master alarm permits. Right now, an apartment complex can get a permit for every unit in their apartment complex, and we don't know where the alarm is. If there's a, if there's a specific alarm at an apartment, we don't really know where that is unless we go through the apartment complex. Now, the new ordinance would require every apartment that has an alarm to be, have a permit, so that we, because the idea is that when we get that call, we know who to contact. We know if there's a break-in, who to contact. We know who's the oldest responsible for that, for that, you know, for that structure. Apartments still will have to have a permit just for all other structures on that complex, and so that will happen. The permits themselves, in the ordinance, the permits will stay the same price. We're not, we're not actually going up on the, the current price for a permit is $27 with a renewal of $17, and that's annually. Every 365 days, then you have to renew that permit. So if you get a new permit, it's 27. If you renew it, you had a permit, you do it on time, and everything's fine, then you will just, you'll pay $17 to renew that. The permit lasts for, in the ordinance, the permit lasts for 365 days. The entire process, because you've heard me talk about revocation, we have, we do have some ways in the ordinance to revocate those permits, which means if they have so many false alarms, after, after six false alarms, we have the ability to revocate that permit in the ordinance. If that permit is revicated, then we call it, we will do a restricted response, so we will not be responding. So those are some of the changes in that. There's some other, there's some other nuances to that. We make sure everybody gets a notice if we're going to revocate. They get a notice if they've had excessive false alarms. The issue with going, outsourcing is, they're going, we're going to get timely and better notifications. Yes, they're going to try to collect those. We're not, they're not going to be hounding people and threatening people. You know, they're just going to call and say, "You have these fees you have to pay. If you haven't paid your fees of false alarms, which start after 3:00." So you can have three false alarms in 365 days. On the fourth, fifth false alarm, then you're going to get assessed a fee. And that fee in the ordinance will, has also been changed, and that fee will go from what is currently $65 for police to $82. And that cost is really the cost for us to be able to hire the management company and outsource it. So the only increase is really based on what now we're having to pay to outsource that, this process. Fire will go from 107 to 135. Now, these are fees, these are, they've had these false alarms, and they have so many, they start getting assessed these fees. They'll only get assessed these fees three times. They get three free in a year, the second three, they get assessed these fines. We don't keep assessing them fines like we do now with the current ordinance. We stop it at 6:00, and we revoke their permit. There's an appeal process, they can appeal that and say, "Why?" They have an opportunity to actually fix the issue, and then they can be reinstated through that whole process again and have another 365 days. If, at the end of that 365 days, they continue that type of false alarms, then we can actually suspend, that means completely suspend their permit for six months. They can't get a new one, like you can if it's revoked. So those are just briefly kind of compared to what we have now, compared to what the changes will be in the ordinance. We really think it's going to be incentive, but we think in some of the cities we've looked at, by outsourcing it, we can double the compliance on permits, at least double the compliance. And we can reduce the false alarms by at least 30 or 40 percent, by the way, with the new ordinance and by outsourcing it. It's just more, it's just more efficient, and it's, we talked about online, it's much easier, it'll be much more friendly for people getting permits, for notifications, they'll have, they'll have, we'll have it on the website, their website about how to get information, they'll be proactive on how to help fix your alarms, what the issues are. So I just think overall, it's just going to be much more, you know, interactive and be a better way to do this whole process.
Chief, will this outside company receive payments, or will the payments continue to go to the city of Oklahoma City?
The payments, the company itself, the management company, gets 27 percent of everything.
Right, but will the funds actually go to a bank account controlled by this outside company, or does it go to the city's accounts?
I think it comes to the city.
Well-
That's after, that's, and the city's responsible for paying the company the 20, whatever that 27 percent is.
Can this new system provide for automatic drafting of checking accounts or credit cards each year to renew the license?
That's an option. We haven't worked all those details, but one thing's for sure, that the city gets all the revenue first, and we write them a monthly check.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think there's still, there's still a lot of things with the company. There are options to do online, things we can do online and request that they have the capability of doing that we don't.
I do think it'd be helpful if we did provide for automatic drafts on the renewals.
Okay.
I also have a question. So I'm hearing that if someone's getting these fees, they're not being sent to collections for non-payment, they're just getting their permit revoked.
They're getting, yeah, the company that we hire will provide them notices. When they, if they haven't paid their fee, they'll get a notice from us, "You have an overdue fee." We'll never send them to collection. That will be the only company that they ever get in contact with, and they won't have us come out and issue any citations, and that will be all there is. And after 6:00, if they just haven't paid, we're not, in many cases, we'll just write that off and say, "We're no longer responding to your alarm, it's been revoked."
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think you're also talking about two different items too, right? The item that's on the consent docket is just the, is just the-
The contract.
But then later on, on our agenda, is when we're going to introduce that, the ordinance that you were mentioning.
Correct.
Okay. Are you going to redo it then, or talk about that ordinance more then, or?
I wasn't planning on it, I think.
No, no.
If you have a question, ask me now.
All right.
Not that I won't come back up if you want me to.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
How common are these false alarms going, how common are the false alarms, number one? And then, how common is it for someone to not pay, to just let it keep going, to just not interact with us at all when it comes to these permits?
Well, I don't know that I have the specific number on the ones that just don't pay. We have some that pay and just don't care. It's the price of doing business. We have some that will just write you a check, the fees after another, but we don't want that. We want, because we don't want to keep having to respond. It's like they're paying for us to, now, if we want to go to a policy that everybody pays now, that every call we respond to, I think that'd be a good deal, but it's not really what police work and what the city's all about, providing that service, so. But 98 percent of all of our alarms are false, so if we have, yeah, it's nuts. And that, that means that officer's out there spending a couple of hours, you know, maybe at the most, at the most maybe 45 minutes, responding to that call, checking it out, finding out its faults, and then not being available for other calls or being for any proactive activity. And so that is what we're trying to encourage, and that, and we think that by doing this, that I know in other, the other cities that we have looked at that have outsourced it like this, and provided maybe some ordinance changes like we're looking at, have reduced that by as much as 40 percent, and maybe more.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving through the things that we have presentations for, or were requested to pull out for extra discussion, we've got Item U. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, Item U is a-
Yeah, item U is, I've mentioned this project a number of times, but it's extremely important to the residents out in Surry Hills area. It's an ODOT project, State Highway 4, also known as Piedmont Road, is a, there's been a number of fatal accidents on this state highway, and people out there are rightly concerned about it, and so I just continually mention it every time it gets on our agenda that we are doing our portion of the project. We are working with ODOT and working with the city of Yukon to make that road safer and to make it more efficient and to increase sightlines and all the things that needs to happen out there, so that's it.
Okay. That brings us to item X. This is a resolution adopting the March 2019 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program, and we have a presentation.
Yeah, Eric Winger's here to give us just a quick update on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We actually had an amendment just this past month, and we're bringing to you now this Second Amendment for the Better Streets, Safer City program, and this is the March 2019 update. So to just do a quick background, with the previous amendment that was approved, there are six residential, 94 arterial, eight street scape, 69 sidewalk, 13 trail, and 11 bike lane projects that have been approved under Better Streets to date. This amendment, which will be the third, adds an additional $42.9 million worth of additional projects, and it will include 13 additional residential, four arterial, and three street scape projects. And so we're continuing to add these projects through 2019, as we mentioned. This past year, we had added about 50% of the projects approved, and so 2019 is this year where we're going to be hopefully collecting the remaining balance of the Better Streets funds and working with the subcommittee to bring those projects forward to you for approval, and this is just that next step, bringing that next series of projects. The packet includes a specific list of projects, so if you're interested in the details, we have that, and then also later in the agenda, if we've got time, we also have an annual report update that will actually give you a better summary of everything to date with some mapping and some other additional totals, so can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. We also have a citizen who signed up to speak on this item. David, come forward. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
David Amatpour, 1301 West Hefner Road. I was just going to ask, there's a lot of construction cones on Western from 122nd down to Willshire, and I didn't know when the start date was for that part of the Better Streets, Safer City. I know it said spring of 2019.
So admittedly, we have a lot of work in the city, and so I can check on that, and I can get that information back to you just after the meeting, so I'll be happy to visit with you. I think all of the projects for Better Streets are online at OKC.gov/BetterSafer. There's an interactive map that's there, and you can actually zoom into the map and click on one of those street projects, and it'll give you a general timeline, the budget, and some other information.
I understand that I've been there before, but it just says spring of 2019. I'm wondering if this is going to be starting soon or not, just so I can avoid it when it comes to commuting and stuff like that.
Absolutely, let me get with you immediately after the meeting, I'll be happy to update that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, Eric Winger, at the end of the meeting, I would love for you to meet Tony Carfeng, who I have appointed to the board to join you all with this Community and Neighborhood Enhancement process. Tony's quite the bike advocate, bikes from Shepherd Neighborhood over here in Ward 2, every day to Boeing on the southeast side of our city to do his work. He has a young family, and he cares so much about making sure that better streets and the GO bond are implemented till we have complete streets. I can't wait for you two to start working together, so thank you for that.
All right, any other comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to A B, Special Permit Renewal, Councilman Stone, you wanted to discuss this?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a renewal for an agreement that covers Hefner, Overholser, and Draper, and it's for the rental of, oh my gosh, I just drew a blank, help me out. Paddleboard, thank you, for paddleboard services, which is great, I think paddleboards are great, love seeing them in use, but I don't believe I've ever seen them for rent out at Lake Stanley Draper. So my request is that we would defer this item, and I would ask that Draper not be included in this agreement, and that possibly we offer it up to someone else that might actually rent paddleboards out there. I do want to defer.
Okay, we don't actually have a motion yet on the table, so we can move to defer that item, and we'll vote on it, is that...
Vote on it separately.
Two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, got the motion?
I will make the motion that we defer this item for the next two weeks.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the deferral?
Sorry, real quick, which item?
A B, so on page nine of the printed agenda, 7A B, Special Permit Renewal with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and Flat Tide.
Appreciate you.
So I've got one question for Chris, I want to clarify that if we do this special permit, once we do it for this company, it doesn't prevent us from doing other companies, it's not like it gives them exclusive right on the lake, is that correct?
That's correct. They have a number of sites at Hefner, Overholser, and two sites at Draper, so we could...
They do have two sites at Draper.
Others who might want to do the same thing at any of the three lakes.
So would you want to move ahead with it if we can still do this with other companies that'd be interested?
I would prefer that we didn't, because to me, it seems the value with it for whoever's going to provide this service, the real value of it would be if you have the sole rights to do it for that area.
Todd, would you prefer just to... Todd, would you prefer just to exclude Lake Draper from the motion and allow, given the time of year and the weather, they may... Chris, when do you plan on having these paddleboats in operation?
Councilman, this company's been doing business since 2013, and it's kind of an ongoing thing.
Yeah.
And whenever the weather's nice, they're out there.
Sure, I'm just saying, if your focus wants to be on Lake Draper, can they proceed with the other lakes?
Sure, absolutely, because they're at the other lakes. Again, my problem is that we're tied up into an agreement with them to provide the service at Draper, and Draper's included in it, but they're never there.
No, I understand, and perhaps we could just carve out Lake Draper and allow this motion to go forward, other than as it relates to Lake Draper.
Absolutely.
We'll modify the agreement accordingly.
Sorry, we're always working on the mechanics over here. Okay, so what we might do is amend the item, withdraw the motion for deferral first, then amend the item to take out Draper, and then they can always throw a Draper permit on a future agenda, it doesn't necessarily have to be deferred.
Francis has advised us that Water Trust has already approved it.
If you have to go back to the Water Trust if the amendment...
Yes, ma'am. Or just defer the whole item?
That's what we'll do, is we can take it back to Water Trust.
We'll resubmit to the Trust with the modification if you all desire, and then we'll bring it back through afterwards.
So they will continue to operate as they currently do at Hefner and Overholser, right? I don't want to negatively impact Hefner and Overholser.
Yes. This permit, the way it's written, would allow them to do all three lakes?
Until we get it...
We can redraft it and then resubmit it to the Trust at the next meeting?
For Council's action today, just move to amend this item by excluding Lake Stanley Draper, and then approve it without that lake in it, and then...
And then it has to go back to the Trust.
Chris will take it back to the Trust, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Well, okay, I need you to say that you withdraw your previous motion.
I withdraw my previous.
And now, would you like to make another motion?
I would like to amend, make a motion to amend this agreement and remove Lake Stanley Draper.
Okay, all right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. So now we can still just vote on the item as amended as a group, right Francis, with everything else in the consent document?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that item, Councilman Stone? Okay, we'll move on then to item A C, Councilman Stone cipher.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to alert everybody the fact that there is a lot, there are a lot of things going on out at Lake Hefner to enhance the recreational experience, the Burt Cooper Trail's being resurfaced, ARX put in some new workout facilities at Stars and Stripes that was dedicated last Saturday, but A C's kind of intriguing, and I think it really does enhance the recreational experience at Lake Hefner, in that it's a company that's entering into a special permit with us to provide cruising services on a sailboat. It will have staff that are licensed by the United States Coast Guard, it appears to have well-trained people, and I was going to tell you, if you have some interest in it, if I can pull it up, you can call 923-2702, that's 923-2702, and ask for Rob, he works with Sail Lake Hefner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 7A S, this is on page 13 of the printed agenda, technically A S, item two, this is regarding a Maps3 Streetcar, and we have a presentation.
Yes, so Doug Smith is here with Jacobs to make the presentation, and it's presenting the final acceptance on the streetcar mainline.
Morning, City Council. Good to be with you today on this special day. Today, we're bringing a recommendation to final acceptance for the largest of the streetcar contracts, which is the construction of the mainline. This contract has been, we've been finalizing it since the system was open back in December. It's now at the point where the contractor has completed the items, to the point we're ready to declare it complete and for final acceptance. First of all, just a little background on kind of how streetcar projects normally fit together. It's usually a dance between getting the vehicle selected, building the infrastructure that the vehicle needs, and then receiving the vehicles and running them on that infrastructure. So that's what we had to do in this particular case. So back in 2014, the vehicle for the Oklahoma City Streetcar Project had been selected, and we're ready to move into design of the mainline. So the design notice proceeded there in late 2014, and we got to work in all of 2015 working on the design of the track and the alignment, and then in February of 16, we had to realign the route to adjust it for the location of the convention center. So that was all taken into account, and then by the middle of 2016, we're ready to prequalify for mainline contractors. We got the design completed then in August, and by November, we had a contractor selected, and we were ready to issue a notice to proceed. At that point, we issued a notice to proceed, we thought that we could do the construction in about two years, and that would lead us to November of '18 completion, leading to that opening in December. So again, the footnote there at the bottom, the number 18 completion was forecasted at that time. So this is one of the major successes of the project, is that we were able to pull that out, and you can see some of the substantial completion milestones there as you go along, leading to the Milestones E and F, final completion in February, and leading to today where we're bringing final acceptance. Now, in terms of budget, we had estimated at that August 2016, we were done with the design, that we would be at a bid price of around $57 million. And then, we had included deductive alternates to be able to make sure that we met budget in case we opened the bid and we needed to start taking things away. We wanted those prices on there, and I won't go into detail on each one of those, but we're very fortunate, and then when we opened the bid, you could see the bid opening at $50 million, we did not have to deduct those from the project. And if you go through each one of those items there, those have been huge benefits to the project now as we've brought it into testing and certification and opening. So we're very happy that we got the bid price that we did. Now, as we've gone through the construction over the last two years, we've had about $6.5 million worth of change orders and amendments, and many of those were things that were added back to the project that benefited the overall system. One example of that is the Fifth Street Turnback. So the Fifth Street Turnback between Broadway and Robinson isn't in use right now, but it is available for expansion, and it's available as a special operation for Embark to use. So we were able to install that track as part of this project while we had a contractor mobilized. So there's your final contract amount, we ended up right at about $56.5 million. Just some examples of things that we did as we built the project, we had the rail, the street was saw cut, the rail was brought in and skeletonized into the street, then the concrete got poured around it to embed the rail, and then the finish around the sides, there's an example for Bricktown, of the pavers being brought back next to it, and then, of course, that plaque is sitting there on Fifth Street now, where we celebrated the last foot of track being installed. On the platforms, you can see forms going in, tactile strips being put on the edges of the platforms. In the lower left, you can see the pylons being set, and then finally, the shelters being installed for the finished platforms. We did 22 of those. We also had to build what we call overhead contact system, or OCS poles. We had over 200 of those to install, and the process was install the pole foundations, get the poles set, put the wire up, et cetera. One thing this project has that many streetcar projects don't is we use joint-use poles, and that is to say that many of our streetcar poles have streetlights on them, and we did that intentionally to avoid cluttering up the streets, so that you wouldn't have a streetlight pole and an OCS pole right next to each other. That's one of the intentional things that was done in this project, just for the overall appearance of the street scape. And then we had our traction-powered substations, there are six of these, two in Bricktown, three in Midtown, and one at the maintenance facility, and you can see the process there, putting in the foundations, getting the prefabricated building in from where it was manufactured, setting it on the foundations, getting it all wired up, and putting it into service. Then we were ready for the integrated testing and commissioning, and the reason we call it integrated testing is that we're now taking the streetcar vehicle, the infrastructure that we put in place, and we're testing that all as one unit. These are all different contracts, so we've got to make sure this all fits together and works. So we did things like running the vehicle on the Hudson non-revenue track, that's a section of Hudson between the Boulevard all the way down to the maintenance facility at Seventh Street. That was a really good feature of this project, to be able to use that to test the vehicles without being in running traffic or being in service. Then we towed the vehicles through, the alignment to make sure everything cleared, and we checked gaps at the doors, and that gap has to be between one and a half and three inches to be successful. Again, I mentioned the platform installations, 22 of those in all the major neighborhoods of downtown, from downtown to Midtown, Automobile Alley in Bricktown, all those platforms completed, traction-powered substations completed. The top left is one of the OGN transformers, it was a coordinated effort with OGN, and also, since we have three substations in the Midtown area, one of them is a spare. That gives us more redundancy, more flexibility in our operation, so we can run on two and have one in spare. We normally have all three of them turned on just to keep them exercised, but also in Bricktown, there are two there, and that gives us an extra there. So all this kind of resiliency that we were able to build into the project was included. On the rail, we put in 904 tons of girder rail that came in, that was actually milled in Austria, where that's a specialty of theirs, is making that girder rail that was brought in Oklahoma City. You can see how it's stored, it was, the project almost never slept, it was put in place in the streets and embedded, and we also had curve rail that went in, and also power switches and turnouts. So here's one of those projects, I'll buy the numbers, type slides, point out a few things, we did 62,000 feet of saw cutting, all that 29,000 feet of track slab for our mainline, and you can kind of look over the numbers there, look at all the wire, nine and a half miles of electric wire and nine and a half miles of train signal cable, so lots of materials and resources involved in getting this project built. I do want to mention the safety record of this project, because doing something like this, and with all the street work and all the electricity and different things we had to deal with, we're proud to say that we had three minor injuries, no major injuries. Contractor would have safety meetings like this, this one was in a Safety Week presentation, making sure that everyone got to go home and see their families every night, that was our goal, and so we accomplished that. I want to acknowledge our design team, Jacobs and AICOM were the major partners on this design, we had project advising from SOJ, Hans Bützer was the, worked on the platform architecture, TEC worked on traffic studies and engineering, and Lemke Land Surveying was our design surveyor. And then the construction team, which was a joint venture between Herzog and Stacy Whitbeck, the overall prime, our main electrical subcontractor was C3M, and then we had local contractors with TLS working on the signaling, Rudy Construction working on much of the civil work, excavation, grading, paving, et cetera, and Perry Drillers put in over 200 of those post-pole foundations, a critical part of the project. of the project, plus 48 more subcontractors and suppliers, all part of that group that got this thing built. So in conclusion, as I said, the schedule was a complete success and the budget was a success in that we, we set out to do it for a certain budget and we delivered that. And I want to point out, this is really an extraordinary delivery of this kind of project compared to many other cities and what they've experienced. If you talk to Seattle, they'll tell you they had to wait for months or maybe more, maybe a year for a streetcar to come in so they could start their service. We had things orchestrated where we got our mainline built, we got our cars in, we were able to start service on time. So that was really an extraordinary delivery of this project. In terms of value, Oklahoma City Streetcar, in terms of dollars per track mile, is one of, one of the best, if not the best, in terms of constructed cost in the country. So we were able to pull this off, again, in an extraordinary way, providing that value. I also want to acknowledge the project team throughout, of course, the MAPS staff, the Embark staff, everyone combining together to make this schedule and budget work. The schedule was very difficult to make things happen when they did. And so it required everyone chipping in to make that work. And lastly, it's an expandable project, so that sets you up for your next move in terms of what happens to the track. There are certain intersections where, such as Fourth and Broadway, where that track is ready to expand to the east. And there are other locations where you're ready to go. But that Fifth Street Turnback, which has been put in, is another important component of a future route. All that to say, it is expandable and it's ready to go for your next project. So again, our recommendation is for final acceptance and we'll leave you with that.
Thank you Doug.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one. It's, I just want to say it's certainly a successful construction project and you should be proud of the success that you all had with this. I do have, it's more of an operational type question. Are the cars able to increase their speed than what they, compared to what they're currently, the speed that they're currently operating at? Can we see an increase in the speed of the car?
The, well, the answer is yes. They, in some cases, speed limits have been set at certain levels for, for a reason. But there are adjustments can be made to that. You know, I'm not, I'm not involved in the operations.
Yes.
But I will tell you, what I've heard is that Embark has been very cautious and their contract operator, Herzog Transit, they're very cautious about how quickly they-
All right. You danced long enough.
Yeah. Here's Jason.
Jason just came in behind you. You did a great job handling that until he got here. Jason just walked in. Jason Fairwish.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, you did a really good job. You did good.
I do think it's well worth pointing out that it was a successful construction project.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch the whole question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So my question is, was, one, are, do the streetcars have this capability of increasing the speed that they're currently using? And do you foresee a time when we may see an increase in speed? And what I'm driving at is the time it takes to say, complete the route.
Yeah. So, so for speed, just for clarification, we'll always, we'll always operate at civil speed. So, but in, but in terms of like frequency, how often a vehicle is coming by a streetcar stop platform?
Yeah.
That really, I mean, there's a lot of variables. It does have to do with not only the amount of time it takes us to get around the, the entire loop, of course, but also a number of vehicles. And so right now, we are seeing improvements in our frequency or the speed at which a streetcar makes it between platforms. We are now averaging during our peak time, right at about an 11-minute frequency. Okay? We kind of, since the project started, you know, our, our goal has been to be about every 10 minutes. So we're getting close. How have we done that? We've done that through some traffic signal priority. We've done that through just becoming more familiar and better with operating the streetcar. And, and we intend to continue to improve that through mainly additional traffic signal priority. So during our peak time, 10 minutes, I believe, is, is not out of the question when things are operating as they should. Now, just mentioned that, you know, blockages along the streetcar route continue to be kind of our number one issue.
Okay.
And so we're working through that with some enhanced pavement markings to make sure that people are fully aware of how they need to park as they parallel park alongside of the track. That's one of the big issues we're dealing with right now.
Well, and we have to take in consideration the environment that we're operating in. As you mentioned, traffic impacts that as well as the number of stops. So Jason, if, if we ever did expand the track, say to the Health Science Center, the Innovation District, once it got in certain areas, could we see an increase in speed along portions of the route to where, again, within speed limits, it, it got to the speed of, say, 40 miles an hour or 35? Can it reach those types of speeds?
Well, the, the streetcar is, is capable of traveling those speeds and, and actually even faster. But again, we will, we will always never exceed, you know, whatever the civil or posted speed limit is.
Right.
But we know, when we time the, when we time the routes, just for general timing purposes, I mean, you know, we don't ever time it based on what the posted speed limit is, of course, because we are making so, so many stops.
Sure. No, I understand.
I think your contention is they could go faster and not break the speed limit. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I know it's sensitive, what we're talking about, but yes, basically.
There's numerous times it looks like it's crawling, you know, just, just barely rolling.
Well, you know-
I think that's what David's hinting at.
Okay, then, then I apologize if I didn't fully understand that you're talking about the actual speed the streetcar was traveling. But, you know, for us, really, you know, above and beyond everything, we look at safety and, you know, speed is one thing we can control, but we can't control other motorists and their tendencies to, you know, either roll a stop sign or, you know, speed up during- so we're very cautious and part of the reason why we, we travel the speed we do.
Sure.
Are there any specific goals that you're currently working on to get, to get to that 10-minute frequency?
Yeah, we are, really what we're working on is additional traffic signal priority to keep the streetcar moving. And with additional traffic signal priority, what we'll be able to do is, again, we're confident we can achieve that 10-minute frequency that we've, you know, kind of set out to do at the set of the project. And what will also allow us the scheduled amount of dwell time, particularly at the dewy stop. You know, as we put our schedule together, we actually build in about a five-minute break or layover to allow opportunities for us to switch operators or for the operator to take a break. And in order to achieve the 11-minute frequency that we're at now, we've actually cut that dwell time down, you know, to two to three minutes. So again, with the traffic signal priority, we'll be able to gain enough time, hopefully to keep our regular program or, you know, ideal dwell and hit the 10 minutes.
So are we weeks away, months away from the 10-minute frequency?
You know, it's hard to say. We have three additional intersections that we're going to be adding traffic signal priority to, hopefully within the next 30 days. And then, as we've mentioned before, you know, we'll, we'll evaluate the gains from those, you know, those installations and then go on to the next phase. And it is a coordinated effort between Public Works and Embark. So our staff, we're working with the traffic staff and really trying to make sure we're strategic about that. But, but we do know and we are sensitive that, you know, our, our peak riding time is coming up. I mean, as the weather gets nicer and there's more and more events downtown, that's when, that's when, that's when people are going to be relying more than ever on the OKC Streetcar to get them around downtown. So we want to be able to perform and meet, meet those customer obligations.
Jason, first I want to say congratulations to Embark and the board on which Councilman Greenwell and I serve, KOPPA for, you know, this accomplishment. Two questions. One, what can council be doing? Will there be opportunities for us in the future to help with signal prioritization or do you already have the funding secured or what does that look like?
Yeah, the, the city council has already approved the additional allocation of MAPS funds to allow us to really look at essentially every intersection along the route for traffic signal priority, if it's determined that, you know, it's needed to make those times.
And then secondly, as we talk about a possible expansion of the streetcar, which means a lot to me because as I mentioned, you know, I live in Paseo and that was, and being the first commercial district, it was also the first place where streetcars were expanded back in the 20s. So I think about that quite a bit when I look at medians that, you know, once upon a time were streetcars, or when I look in the ground and I see rail at like Young's and Joe Best Ward, right? What about a streetcar with its own dedicated lane if, to Councilman Greenwell's, you know, concern, it's having to ride within traffic? So as we talk about expansion, is that something that is possible or is it cost prohibitive? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, basically, it all comes down to the alignment, you know, where the next, if there's a streetcar extension, where it will go. Is right-of-way available? And then, yeah, what is the cost of that right-of-way if the city has to acquire it? So there's a good chance, like anytime you have to acquire right-of-way, that obviously there's going to be more costs. But I do think it's, it's, to your point, our existing streetcar system shares the street with motorists, pedestrian cyclists, and that's the way streetcar systems are primarily designed to work. They are a pedestrian circulator, they are meant to mix in with traffic, which is completely different than a light rail system, right? Which that is what you normally see in a dedicated right-of-way. And those light rail systems, because they are in a dedicated right-of-way, they don't have some of these competing uses for, for where they're traveling. And we do with the streetcar. So, you know, my, I guess my answer to that would be, you know, dedicated right-of-way with the next streetcar extension is probably something that will be looked at, just like it wa, if, if an extension is, occurs, just like this downtown loop that we have now, you know, along the Boulevard, where the Boulevard is being constructed, we do actually have a short area of dedicated right-of-way for the streetcar. So I think where it makes sense, where you can do that strategically, it's not cost prohibitive, certainly something you'd want to look at.
Thank you.
I just want to commend the worker's safety on this whole project. I think that is to be commended for as much work that was done and, and zero fatalities and only a few incidents. So thank you so much to everyone who was dedicated to that worker's safety.
Any other questions on the streetcar? Okay.
Yeah, I just echo Nikki's comments, the, the safety component, the timeliness and the cost component, you did a good job.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on then to item AU. There's a presentation here. This is regarding a resolution approving preliminary report on the MAPS 3 South Robinson Avenue reconstruction.
Yes, sir. Mark Long with Smith Roberts Baldishwiler is here to give his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Mark Long with Smith Roberts Baldishwiler. We're the design engineer for the Robinson Street Reconnection, Reconstruction. Real quickly, I'll give you an overview. The South Robinson Avenue Reconstruction was a coordination of projects between the convention center, the park, the Public Works and the Omni and all of the other projects that are going on in the convention center area. This project extends from the I-40 Bridge on the south up to Southwest Third Street, which is the Oklahoma Boulevard. It has a proposed roundabout with bike lanes, streetside parking and a pedestrian signal. It's just under .4 miles and the current estimated budget is two, a little over 2.7 million. Now, as we've talked about, this was, the Robinson Street Streetscape or Project Reconstruction is the last piece of a jigsaw puzzle of a variety of other projects. And so this is an overlay showing you all of the different projects that had to be come together. And like every other good jigsaw puzzle, you're putting in the last piece in the middle at the end. So all the pieces around it are in the center. So there's been a lot of coordination and we will have to continue to do that in order to be able to adapt the last piece. It has a roundabout. We'll talk about each of these elements a little bit more. We'll modify the existing retaining wall. We've got bike lanes that we'll discuss in a few moments. It has streetside parking with food truck lane, accessibility on the park side with a convention center drop-off lane, a dedicated turn lane for the Oklahoma Boulevard, 10 feet multimodal sidewalks on both sides, a pedestrian signal at the convention center. And then we're also addressing a 12-inch water line, which is the last utility line that is very old that needs to be addressed. All the other lines have been addressed. At the roundabout, we have a single lane roundabout to keep traffic flowing. This is suitable for trucks. It has a continuous bike lane on the west side for protected access. It also has bike lanes that will, on the east side, that will merge with vehicular traffic so that the cyclists will have an option of either going through the roundabout, which is allowed, or if they don't feel comfortable, they'll be able to exit onto a multimodal sidewalk. And then we have mountable curbs on all sides of the roundabout to allow for wider turning truck movements. And that was one concern because you have an extensive amount of truck traffic, shuttle vans, buses, that will be using the roundabout in order to be able to access to the convention center. The typical truck is a WV-50, which is 50 feet long, but we looked at a WB-67, which is an additional length, and we did an extensive amount of turning analysis in order to be able to accommodate these turns. We'll be modifying the ODOT constructive retaining wall to be able to provide the pedestrian access sideways at sidewalk at the corner. We'll provide continuous six-foot bike lanes. This was something that was important to the concept of, of the traveling motorists on the, on the bicycle and, and protecting them. And we'll provide a multimodal sidewalk for allowing for both pedestrians and bicycles. Last but not least, we'll have a pedestrian signal at what was Southwest Fifth Street. It's the intent to allow a large number of people to be able to access from the park to the convention center. And so we'll also be providing continental crosswalks at Sixth and Fourth Street as well. That will provide that access. Generally, we're here today for your approval of our preliminary engineering report. And then our schedule is to bid this project in late summer and then construct it beginning in the fall of 2019. Again, we're going to be cognizant of being able to time this between the completion of the park and dovetailing that into the opening of the convention center and everything else that'll be going on. With that, we can answer any questions that you might have.
With the bike lanes, and this might be a little ahead of the, the curve here game, I don't know, in the design, but you said protected. Do you have any information about what protected means in that definition?
So on the roundabout slide, on the west side, if you look at the purple on the upper side of that slide, in that instance, the bike lane will be protected. It will be outside of the mountable curb.
Okay.
Okay? And so in that instance, that's where we're, they'll, they'll be behind that mountable curb and be able to, vehicle traffic shouldn't be getting into that unless they go over the mountable curb. Now, on the east side, the bike lane will terminate, as you can see on the right-hand side. The bike can go through, the cyclist can go through the roundabout as a normal vehicle would, which is allowable, but we're going to take into consideration, some people will not be comfortable doing that. And so they'll be able to exit onto, on the lower side, you'll be able to see that sidewalk that's in the purple. They can take the crosswalk across on this, on the east side and then get back into the continuous bike lane.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just more of a comment or a question? First off, I mean, the project looks great, I think. Can we get an update? This thing stops at I-40. I just wondered if we could get an update maybe on the south part of the park and maybe the improvements there?
Sure.
If we can expect to see with the timeline?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
So if everything goes according to plan, what's the estimated completion date?
So we are looking at June of '20 so that we can be two to three months ahead of the, the convention center, and that allows us some flexibility, so.
Excuse me.
You work it out, huh?
I'll, I'll- I just want, I just want to express my skepticism on these roundabouts. Here in Oklahoma City, we try to place them in too small of an area and, and, and as a result, I don't think they're as successful as what they are, say, in New York City where they have a much larger area to work with. This may not be as bad since it's basically just three sources of traffic as opposed to four. But I suspect that once traffic builds up on Seventh Street, they will struggle- they will struggle finding an entrance into the flow of traffic. And so I would feel more comfortable if that had traditional traffic signals as opposed to roundabout. And again, it's just the level of traffic that will be present.
So that was definitely a concern. And the traffic study that was done by the Alliance about a year and a half ago did end up indicating that due to the flow of the traffic, where you have a large amount of convention and hotel path that will come outside of the convention hotel, you're going to have a lot of traffic coming from the north that will want to use the convention drop-off. That traffic study indicated that the roundabout would be the fastest way to be able to have that circulating traffic. We were cognizant of exactly that point as far as that. And that's part of that auto-turn software analysis that we were looking at, trying to make sure that we had a wide enough area to be able to accommodate that even larger-sized truck. Now, in this instance, those larger vehicles will be having to get up on that mountable curb. So a delivery truck or a semi-truck will have to be doing that. What our goal is, is that the shuttle van or a bus that is normally going to be traveling people, so that when you're going through the roundabout and you're holding on to that strap, we've been cognizant of maintaining the cross-slope and the slope of the road as you go through the entry and exit so that you will have the least amount of uncomfortableness with the person holding on to that strap making the roundabout. That's what we were trying to accomplish in that. So it is more area than what was desired by the other projects, and that has been something that we will continue to have to work on. We originally were going to impact the convention center parking lot a lot more than we were, and we were originally impacting the park more significantly. We tried to reduce that but yet not compromise that rider going through the roundabout.
Well, from my perspective, I would say compromise both the parking lot and the park just to provide for a larger turning circle. And especially large vehicles on Seventh Street, and I'd say forget about turning left, onto Robinson off of Seventh. But even just a right-hand turn from Seventh onto Robinson, depending upon the level of traffic, could be challenging.
I think it's a good point. And actually, even later today, we're going to be coordinating with the park a little bit more, and so we'll take that comment as we move forward in final design.
Got a question I had about...
Oh, sorry, thank you. Just going back, and maybe you addressed it when you spoke to Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Hammond, point about the bike lanes. The rest of the route, are they protected in a similar way? They didn't seem like, they just seemed like it was the paint on the ground. Not to diminish the importance of paint on the ground for a bike lane, I'm just wanting to...
No, the rest of the project, other than at the roundabout on the west side, the rest of the project has the continuous bike lanes that are traditional as in the lane of traffic. So they're traditional bike lanes.
And has there been any conversation, or is there a way to move us toward those, the kind of protection like that? I ask because, you know, over the last month in the news, I'm sure you're seeing what I'm seeing, you know, I've had, just in my ward alone, and just yesterday, there was a pedestrian who was walking kit, you know, at 63rd and May, where David was talking about earlier up on Western between 122nd and Wilshire on Western. And then, you know, I have friends, who lost a friend recently, who was biking from, you know, his job back to my ward where he lives, where there are no protections at all for the bike lanes on Classon. And I'm just wondering, what can we be doing to be moving toward truly protected bike lanes in a city where for 60 years, you know, cars have been the road? And so as we transition to more complete streets where cars and pedestrians and bikes are sharing the road, is this a conversation where we can be moving toward what we did at that roundabout?
So, there are about three topics there. Specific to this one, I'll address that last. But yes, Oklahoma City is having to evolve. 20, 30, 40 years ago, yes, this was a vehicular-driven street system. And so as an engineer, that's something that operationally, cars and drivers are having to be more cognizant of, that we're going to have shared lanes. And these are things that, in order to be able to accommodate things within the right-of-ways that we have with the utilities and the existing streets, it is a safe way to move them if the operations and the people can evolve that way. Where it's very, where it's possible, we are looking for that. And I believe, and this could be addressed, in the park, there's some other bike trails and lanes that are in the park that people can use if they don't want to use, say, Robinson. In this instance, we had a specific issue in that on the park side, there was a desire to have a parking lane and then have a row where you could have food trucks. And so in order to be able to accommodate the food trucks that would have access to where the purchasing would happen on the west side, we needed to have the bike lane on the east side of that so that we could have a continuous flow of traffic. It's, when you design bike lanes, you're looking at and hoping to that the cyclists will also begin to, they have to understand that that is a shared lane with traffic. And just like drivers, it's, the cyclists and the drivers have to coexist. There's a broader conversation that I can't address here is what you're talking about as far as how that's handled. That's something that certainly can be looked at, but as far as this project, we did the best we could in blending that.
Thank you.
So to follow up on that, so I guess I misunderstood, so these are just sharrows? These are not painted separate lanes?
No, they will be painted. It is six foot wide, designated and painted for the bikes within the, and you'll have the existing lanes, and there's transitioning. This had a very wide right-of-way. So we had a lot of flexibility in some areas. So we were able to provide the six-foot continuous on both, still having four lanes where we needed it, then transitioning it down to a single lane in each direction at the roundabout.
Senator Councilman Stone, have you had a comment?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering, and maybe you mentioned it and I didn't hear it, but adequate accommodations for our handicapped citizens in wheelchairs, that's all been taken into account for the project?
So the entire project will be ADA compliant. That's one of the reasons why that retaining wall will need to be modified, because we can't provide a 10-foot-wide multimodal and ADA accessible without, the corner of that wall. And then we'll also be providing all of the crosswalks, the continental crosswalks, and the ADA sidewalk ramps all the way through.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this brings us to item AW. And Councilman Griner had mentioned it, but we also have a presentation.
Yes, Kelly Kaye is here with YMCA, gives a presentation on, they are being selected here, and the item is authorization to negotiate, but it's such a significant project, and we wanted them to be able to give us an idea of their vision that they have for this project.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, City Council members, we're very excited to be here with you today and really excited to bring this proposal before you. First, I just wanted to also introduce Steve Petty, who is the Director of Community Health Initiatives with Integris. So excited to have him here, as they will be a major partner for us in this proposal, so, and in this project. But, Councilman Stone, I really enjoyed your comments about history, and the YMCA actually this year will be celebrating our 130th anniversary, forming just a few weeks after the land run. And you can see here a fun historic picture of our Camp Classon down in the Arbuckle Mountains. And, you know, most of the young boys diving off of this tower would be eligible for our senior center that we're proposing today. So, very excited about that. And, you know, just thinking about the history of the Y and the city, and how our history is just so intertwined through the years, and how we've come together to meet different needs in the community. Really, everything that the Y does is focused into three areas. Most everything we do really is covered in two or more of these areas. But youth development, focusing on really developing the potential of every child and teen. This last year, we had 67,000 young people who participated in our different programs. Healthy Living, focus on improving health and well-being. Just this past year, over 34,000 50-year-old-plus individuals participated in Healthy Living programming at the YMCA. And then social responsibility, focus on giving back and providing support to our neighbors. With all of these, with the ultimate focus of improving the quality of life and strengthening the foundation of our community. Just to give you a little bit of a sense of the scope of the Y, we have currently 15 locations around the greater Oklahoma City area. One of those is our new partnership with Integris, our Healthy Living Center at the Baptist campus with Integris, which is a medically-based fitness center, also serving a large number of seniors. Camp Classon that I just mentioned a few minutes ago, our Child Development Center at the downtown Y, our Military Welcome Center at Will Rogers World Airport, which is another wonderful partnership with the city, and also provides a tremendous amount of volunteer opportunities. We actually have over 70 senior volunteers that man that center to welcome our young troops into the airport as they pass through our city.
Kelly, worth mentioning on that, that a lot of people call that the USO Center, but it's really not, it's yours.
That's right. It's actually a partnership between the city and the Y and the armed services YMCA to provide that service. So, our Lincoln Park Senior Center, which we've been operating in partnership with the Oklahoma City Parks and Rec, and then the Area-Wide Agency on Aging, which through the Oklahoma County Nutrition Program provides the meals each day, and that partnership has been in place since 1986. We operate 16 fitness centers around the metro area with just under 1,600 pieces of cardio and strength equipment that we maintain and operate on a daily basis, nine basketball gyms, 13 indoor pools, in addition to four outdoor pools that we also operate with various municipalities around the metro area. We also offer 600 land and water group exercise classes, wide variety classes, many of those focused specifically on seniors. Just to highlight a few of those that are really kind of targeted toward 50-year-old-plus individuals, our Silver Sneakers Program, which is a variety of programs designed for those who have been sedentary or have not been involved in an exercise program or have other chronic conditions that prevent them from doing other exercise programs, a lot of chair-based exercise. Enhanced Fitness is also an arthritis class focused on those dealing with arthritis. Our Live Strong at the YMCA program for cancer survivors, Moving for Better Balance, Pedaling for Parkinson's. Exercises Medicine is another area that we're really, as the Y gets more engaged in healthy aging programming, and through our partnerships with Integris and other healthcare providers, Exercises Medicine allows our staff through the American College of Sports Medicine to receive additional certifications that then allow our staff to communicate with the doctor around the conditions of the patient and to make sure that we're setting them up on a program that is best for them. And then Togetherness is another program, not just for 50-year-olds, but, you know, the YMCA at any point in time has about 90,000 members engaged in making an impact on our community. And it's just a wonderful program to get our branches and our members involved in giving back and supporting our various neighborhoods. So we do a variety of different service projects. All of our members come up with those plans and put them into action. We're moving in the direction of more of, especially in Healthy Living, more of a community-integrated health model, which really allows us to link up with healthcare providers and community prevention strategies such as the YMCA to increase access to care, lower costs, prevent and address chronic disease, and then reduce the effects of some social determinants of health. This next slide just gives you a little bit of a sense of our growth over the last several years, as well as our capacity to operate these types of centers and maintain them at a very high level. So you can see where, this year, we're just under $29 million budget. We've set aside about $1.4 million specifically for maintenance. Another important part of our social responsibility is to ensure that no one is ever turned away due to an inability to pay. We have a very simple sliding fee scale based on household income and the number of people in the household. And you can see, just this last year, we provided over $3.4 million in financial assistance. About, right at $3 million of that is in direct scholarships for those who want to participate in the Y as a member or in some of our various programs. And then the other 400 or so thousand is for our free and subsidized programs that we offer throughout the community that you don't have to sign up for. So we have a very strong balance of earned income as well as contributed income. You can see, just this last year, we received just under $1.7 million in contributed support from our community to make our programs and services available to all. We have a strong endowment, which also helps to sustain our organization, just under $8.5 million. And we set aside a reserve balance of about $1.3 million to ensure, with all those facilities that I mentioned before, about 700,000 square feet of facilities that we take care of on a daily basis. So that helps us to be able to do that. So with that, I'm going to pass the clicker here over to Steve and let him talk a little bit about what Integris brings to our party.
Thank you all. So as you may know, Integris is the largest Oklahoma-based health system in Oklahoma. Our mission is to improve the health of the people and the communities we serve, and we've been working with the Y for many years to do that. And we're very excited about this opportunity. These are just some of our clinics and our exposure across the city. We have a lot of providers, and one thing that we've learned at Integris as a nonprofit hospital system is we can't change health just inside the walls of the hospital. So we do what we can to get outside the walls, and that's what I've been very blessed to be able to do. So we've been working, like I said, with the Y for many years, and we've also, working together at the Healthy Living Center over at Baptist, have been able to create a lot of different programs that are evidence-based, looking at ways that health and fitness are working. That also includes nutrition, education, health literacy. And to be able to work at MAPS Senior Center is just a natural for us because of our partnership. We've been also very fortunate to, we are working currently with the very first senior center on Rockwell, and also the Pete White Center over by Capitol Hill High School. So my staff has been working there. We do some evidence-based programs for the Hispanic community and just hosted a large health fair there a few weeks ago. But the one thing that's exciting about this is to prove the success of what we can do together to help people age gracefully, also to give them all that they need as far as education. Integris has Senior Life Wellness, which used to be our Third Age Life Program. That was for senior citizens, and we've done that since the mid-'80s. We do that across the state, but mostly here at our Integris Baptist and Integris Southwest. These are just some of the programs that we do at the, at our different centers. And we go out, again, not only outside of Integris, but also at the Y and other local community centers. But we look at evidence-based, and we try to look at those gaps in service, especially for the minority uninsured and underinsured folks. So these are just a few of the programs that we would like to expand out to this new center. Exercises Medicine is one of the programs that we're doing with our partnership with the Y that is an evidence-based program. We also have, all of our employees at Integris have that option of being a Y member as well. So we not only encourage it externally, but also with our employees. We also do, like I said, the diabetes program and some of these other programs, like the cardiac rehab, and the Jim Thorpe Rehab Center is at the Healthy Living Center. So we're modeling programs there and piloting them, and then finding ways to expand them to other YMCA. So we're really excited about this possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just a couple more slides here, and then be happy to take any questions. But this slide here just depicts, we're actually currently proposing for this next MAPS III Senior Health and Wellness Center, number four, to be located in South Oklahoma City. And just to share a little bit of the reasons why, you can see, and just so you kind of know what you're looking at here, the black dots located all across the screen there are, those are the YMCA's current members that are 50 years and older south of I-40, at least as much of that as we can get on this map for you to be able to kind of see that service area. You can see the Y logo there, that's the Early Wine Park YMCA located in Early Wine Park, very vibrant and strong YMCA operation. But actually, you know, I talked about the 15 locations around the metro area, well, so not counting our Y in Chickasha, this one is the only one that we have south of I-40. So strategically, it makes a lot of sense for the Y to expand more of our programming to South Oklahoma City. The red dot that you see up there is the current Pete White Center, and you can see, so there's a lot of area down there where there really aren't a lot of services to meet these needs of the seniors in our community. And I think it would also create a lot of synergy, whether located right in Early Wine Park or somewhere in that area, to create a lot of synergy to better meet the needs of our seniors in that area. So the demographics that you can see just within a one-mile radius is 4,614 individuals. So the demographics that you can see just within a one-mile radius is 4,614 individuals that are 50-plus, within three miles is 19,000, and then within a five-mile radius is 44,000 individuals that are 50 years and older, right in that area. And just to give you a little bit of a sense of the 34,000 seniors that the Y served this past year, 4,500 of those were through the Early Wine Park Y. So there's, you can see tremendous potential down there, very strong numbers in that demographic to provide those services. So, and then this last slide, just again, kind of reiterate the power of the brand of the Y and the power of the brand of this partnership, but we do have a rich history and a very trusted brand, especially by our seniors. We have a strong operating model as a very strong not-for-profit to promote sustainability and philanthropy, the wide range of programs and offerings that we have that people participate in throughout their entire lifetime, very strong safety standards, the certifications that I mentioned and others, making sure that all of our aquatics facilities are guarded by certified lifeguards at any time that they're open. We collaborate with others. I've mentioned some of the different partnerships. Our national training model that helps us to develop strong and passionate, cause-driven leaders, ensuring access, inclusion, and engagement in the community by all, developing relationships with and among our members, and our ability to convene community leaders for greater good. So I just think that, you know, the MAPS program and projects over the years have created such a strong brand for improving quality of life in the community, and with the brand Integris brings around healthcare and the brand of the Y, together we can really create a strong movement for healthy aging within our community. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Kelly, thank you for the presentation, and I mean, I was kind of around 10 years ago now when this was voted and created, and you know, really at that time, it was imagined that the Y might just operate all of these, you know, and it hasn't worked out that way, but I'm excited that you're coming to the table with this fourth one. And I also want to make a comment, you know, at that beginning of this whole odyssey as well, we talked a lot about these being spread across the city, and I think your location, I'm agnostic really about where exactly, but I think it needs to be in South Oklahoma City because we have two slated for North Oklahoma City, one already built, one in the planning, and we have one in near-south, but that's leaving a lot of expanse of South Oklahoma City to be covered. So I think that's pretty critical to this, that the one that you're working on be serving South Oklahoma City. Any other comments? Councilman Mcatee?
Yeah, I also happen to be around, and I also happen to be the only senior aged one on the horseshoe right here, so finally there's a place for me. This morning has been a youth orientation, but a couple of things, a couple of questions if I could. When the original design and idea was set up on the senior wellness centers, it was set up under the assumption that no senior center necessarily had to be a cookie cutter of another one, that it should be designed for the needs of that area. How has that filtered into what you see as the design for this South Center? Will it be designed to the demographics that are similar to, what's at 122nd in the north, or will it be more oriented towards what's in Capitol Hill? And how does that play out?
Well, I think, you know, based on the RFP, most of the components of the basics of the facility are very much geared toward health and wellness, geared toward seniors. So things like a pool and group exercise and community spaces, multipurpose spaces for education, nutrition, passive recreation activities. But I think, just like all of our Ys and all of our different communities, offer different programs to meet the needs specific to that community. You know, right now, we are proposing that the Y be the operating partner for this, but my understanding is that there will be a lot of additional conversations with constituencies and with the architects to determine exactly the components that go into this specific facility. But I would think, you know, based on the needs of the community around healthy aging and aging in place and the chronic disease, health outcomes that we're seeing in our community and around our state, it will have a major focus around health and wellness programming, group exercise, water exercise, keeping people moving and healthy, and also connected and engaged in their community. You know, the Y is one of the last hubs of the community where people from all walks of life come together and engage with each other, make lasting friendships, and especially, that's a huge concern with our seniors. You know, our seniors at the Lincoln Park Center, for instance, I mean, they love to just come and just sit and visit, you know, play cards and dominoes, have lunch, do an exercise class. We try to keep them active, but they just like being together.
And I want to say, speaking of that Lincoln Center, thank you for the dedication to making sure that we have more programs after we spoke about getting more programming for those seniors, and hopefully we'll be able to explore that more. But also, even when we're talking about Wellness Center number three, I believe you'll be helping in assisting in that operation in some aspects as well, and we hope so as well. So thank you for mentioning the Lincoln Center, and again, thank you for committing to help with improving those programs there as well.
Councilman Reiman?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a perfect partnership, and I look forward to seeing both the YMCA and Integris, Steve and the whole group at Integris do a tremendous job working with the community as well as the Y. I'm currently a member of the Early Wine YMCA, and it's used extremely well. And I think the best benefit or the best feature that it provides is, granted, it has a lot of youth programs and middle-aged programs, but the number of seniors that participate at the Early Wine Y, I think the biggest factor that contributes to that are the classes because once you get up to a certain age, it becomes more challenging to exercise by your own, and you all do a tremendous job of developing classes. Now, one thing I do kind of think may, one of the downside is that some of the older people like to show off in front of the younger people, and that may be missing at the new senior center, but we'll get by with that. But I think it's a perfect partnership. Now, I know we've got a lot to, a challenge in front of us with the center in Northwest Oklahoma City and Councilman Stone Cypher's Ward. It's been very successful, but I think we'll be able to match that. And as long as we can get assurance that parking will be, will not be a problem, I think, I don't see any reason why it would not be extremely, and I mean extremely, successful at the Early Wine facility. It's just a natural fit, and people from throughout South Oklahoma City go that extra effort to attend that facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
I applied everything that I'm hearing and the work that you and Integris have done. You know, my mother's retired, as I mentioned earlier, and so though I am youthful and though my right knee reminds me that I'm aging, I always think of my mother and, you know, folks who are retired. I'm actually curious, in terms of the location on the South Side, you know, I teach at Jefferson Middle School on the South Side. South Side has my heart. I believe that we should be doing everything to better connect the two sides of the river. I'm curious from the other South Side council folk on the actual location, only because I'm curious when it comes to neighborhoods where we're not, where they're lower income and we're not seeing those health outcomes, you know. In fact, a lot of times where we're seeing lower income, we're seeing food deserts and we're seeing not-so-positive health outcomes, and I'm wondering, are we wedded to this particular location on the South Side? Because what I've seen is that that particular area has a lot more middle and upper-middle class and upward mobility than other areas that I've seen on the South Side, and I'm just curious how this location was chosen and how, yeah, just that, and especially to our other South Side council people. I'm curious about that.
Well, and I think we're, you know, we're just trying to work with the city and with the MAPS Subcommittee to identify, you know, looking at where all of our current branches are located, because as I said, we're serving 34,000 people who qualify to go to these centers. And I think because of the Pete White Center that's north of I-40, I think all of these centers really need to be looked at strategically with the Y and other providers to make sure that we're really casting the widest net possible to attract the most seniors. The Y does, or even the Early Wine Park Y provides a significant amount of financial assistance to families, and if you saw the map there of the members who are actually coming from a lot of those neighborhoods that you're talking about and still taking advantage of the Y at Early Wine Park. So I think that there's a way to strategically locate all of these facilities, however many more we get to do, to make sure that we're really serving the entire community and creating as much access as possible to these types of facilities and services, and to even, you know, even with the other operating partners, to create some synergy and some shared services and partnerships as well. You know, that's what the Y does. We work with others in the community, and anybody who's working to help people become healthier, we want to partner with them, so.
James, I would want to just respond, since I know that area well. That particular Y at Early Wine draws people from as far away as Tuttle Blanchard, Larry's Ward Three, we have quite a few members that live in Ward Three, Ward Four, Councilman Stone, as well as the City of Moore, and it draws northwards to, north of I-240, people drive that far. The Early Wine Park is a natural draw. It's a tremendous park in and of itself, a one-and-a-half-mile jogging trail with a lot of, many other amenities. Hopefully, it won't be too long, we'll get some outdoor fitness facilities like we're seeing in other parks, too, to go along with that, but the park itself attracts a large number of people throughout the year, but certainly as weather improves and there's more outside activities. So it's a natural fit for some type of a wellness center, and it certainly will not limit its draw to just the immediate area. It'll draw people. And I think we have to take into consideration, where do people feel comfortable in going, attending these types of programs and activities, and certainly, people feel very comfortable in the Early Wine area.
Yeah, Councilman, just to kind of reiterate those words again, but maybe from a Ward Four standpoint, we've got the one in Capitol Hill, we've got the Wellness Center, the Pete White Center down at 72nd Walker in that area. Knowing this area over there, I think it's a perfect, perfect fit for it. I think it still does serve some of the areas maybe that I want to see more served, as well as you do, but, and I can also tell you, I had the opportunity to talk to a bunch of kids at Southeast High School, and one thing we talked about there is their need for a community center. They do have a need for a community center, but a lot of them love going down to Early Wine Park, too. They love it, it's, they know it's in a safer environment, they love going to that. So I know, especially with seniors like myself and Councilman Mcatee, that's pretty important to us as well. So he keeps pushing me out of being the senior, and David keeps, excuse me, the mayor keeps pushing me out of being part of the youth movement, which is real, I felt like I belonged there, but something happened, so I'm just in no-man's land. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments on this item?
Yes, sorry. One of the things that, on COPPA, that we've been moving toward, and I, is making, trying to figure out how we can use public transportation to transport seniors from different parts of the city to these different senior wellness centers so they can go enjoy these programs like Nikki is talking about. I think that's critical because to Councilman Greenwell's point where people want to feel safe in a better environment, yes, absolutely, and yet at the same time, we got to make sure that the people who are living in those neighborhoods that aren't those better environments, and those are a lot of my kids, those are a lot, those are most of my kids, you know, on free and reduced lunches, we got to make sure that they have connectivity, and I think that's where the public transportation component is. So I would encourage you all to keep working with Embark, especially with the senior transit that we're wanting to roll out and this pilot program, really take on the public transportation component of this so we can connect all of the South Side. It sounds like it's already a draw, that park's already a draw, let's get as many more people as we can there, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the presentations under the consent docket. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about under the consent docket? Seeing none, we do not have a motion on the table. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on anything on the consent docket? And of course, this motion includes that item that was previously amended on the motion of Councilman Stone. Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Moving on to the concurrence docket, this is page 14 of your printed agenda. We have items A through T, and I also want to note that item E was amended by a properly noticed, I presume, Francis?
Yes.
Properly noticed amendment that would be a supplemental material that changes the dollar amount of item E from $2,35,540 to $3,35,540. Because this was noticed, we don't actually need to adopt the amendment, we're just working off of the amended version. Having said that, is there anything anybody wants to pull out? Otherwise, I'd take a motion for all the items as a group.
Move the items for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. This now brings us to items requiring separate votes. Page 18 on your printed agenda, item 9A is where we will begin, 9A1. These are ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. This is 115 Southeast 26th Street, moving from R4 and I1 to I2 and I1. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, is anyone? All right. With that being said, I spoke with the applicant on yesterday, and he advised me of everything that he wants to do, and he promised me he would be a good neighbor.
Another good neighbor.
So with that, I say move with the, move with the motion to approve.
Okay, good. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A2, this is at 1919 Northwest 30th Street, moving from R1 to R2. Councilman Cooper.
So again, I think they're going to be a wonderful neighbor there. 30th Street is full of residential properties already, one- and two-story historic homes and apartments, and this would be a duplex, and so far, we haven't heard any protest, and there were no votes on the Planning Commission, so this has my support.
All right. I'll consider that a motion in a second. We'll, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9A3, this is at 424 North Phillips Avenue, going from R3, C4, I2, and I3 to PUD 1700. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I believe the applicant is here.
This is the most different zoning in one PUD I've ever seen.
Yeah, it's a lot going on, so I'll let them, I'll let them explain what's going on, and then we'll, we'll have some questions.
Pat Garrett with Garrett &amp; Company. There are 14 of us owners that have come together in this 25-acre tract to propose this PUD, a mixed-use development. It's been about 20 years in the making, and we want to thank the staff, planning staff, they were very helpful in amending our PUD and making it a lot more workable document. I'm here to answer any questions on our PUD.
Well, my main, a couple of questions that I have, just want to make sure the residents are aware of all the changes that are going to be updated and they're okay with that.
Yes, we have a number of them have joined us with the application.
Okay, because I knew we had to have quite a few different conversations even with the neighbors, so just wanted to make sure with that. And also, I want to thank you all for including the Jewel Theater and also the Charles Morgan Building to ensure that we get that preserved, so thank you so much for that. And I know we're going to have further conversations that involve just a partnership as far as a foster center is concerned, so thank you for that as well. With that being said, I will go ahead and move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
9A4, at 6001 South Council, going from AA to PUD 1705. Councilman Mcatee.
Yes, is the applicant present? Has anybody signed up, Francis? Okay, this was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, but how we got to this position, I think merits some attention, and if you would just give them an overview of some of the things, steps you went through to get to the approval.
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, which is Stevens Trucking. Mr. Stevens is here with me, as well as Kendall Dillon, who's a civil... Mr. Stevens is here with me, as well as Kendall Dillon, who's a civil engineer on the project. As Councilman mentioned, when this was filed, we initially received quite a bit of interest from the neighborhood to the north. If you're familiar with this area, it's, it's undergoing a significant change right now with the turnpike coming through there, Southwest 59th is completely torn up. So, we got a bunch of protests and concerns, so we went and had a neighborhood meeting, and what resulted from the neighborhood meeting were a series of good questions and the ability for us to, to make some minor modifications to our, our site plan. So what you have here is the, the trucking facility will be down here along Council Road, the only access to the trucking facility will be off Council Road. So what we were able to do to screen the residents to the north was, we provided a strip of office zoning and commercial zoning on the hard corner. So with that, we have over a 200-foot buffer from 59th to the trucking. There will be no access from 59th to the trucking facility, so all of the large trucks will be using Council Road. Again, if you're familiar with the area, this area is full of trucking facilities, Hobby Lobby is not far from here. It's continuing to trend in a more commercial slash industrial type of development, and that will only increase with the, with the turnpike coming online shortly. So, once we were able to have the meeting, I, I think we were able to answer the questions. Nobody appeared at Planning Commission to protest. Planning Commission did recommend approval, and we'd asked for the same.
Thank you, David. Unless any of the council have some questions, with no protests, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're at 9A5, this is at 16201 North Rockwell, going from AA to PUD 1706. Councilman Stone cipher.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this is an ordinance on final hearing, it was heard before the Planning Commission on February 14th, and, and it was unanimously approved, and I am aware of no opposition, so I'd move for its approval at this time.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to 9A6, this is 11060 Northwest 23rd, going from PUD 153 to PUD 1707. Councilman Greiner.
Did anybody sign up?
Okay, well, this is just a, a high school expansion and adding in a football field. There were protesters at one point during the process, but there were meetings, and I think that a number of things changed to offset some of the negative impacts that could have affected the neighbor, neighbors to the east, and so with that, I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A7, 3728 Northwest 9th, going from SPUD 979 to SPUD 1103. Councilman Mcatee.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
This is an extremely challenging project from another viewpoint, from the topography of the land around there. If you would, just give the council a brief overview of what you intend to do with, with this land.
On this land, we're going to just put in a 3,000-square-foot building, parking lot, and making sure the aquifer is taken care of for a electrical construction, construction company. And so it's just, it's, we're not selling things out of it, it's just a place to do business and install some lifts and those kinds of things. When I did talk to the, the planning, the staffing committee, they did go out there, we are very contingent of putting in trees, grass, and making it look not so commercial, so they wanted us to put wainscoting, maybe like a brick four feet up, and then hardy board siding, so it looks more transitional to the residential area.
This is a challenging area that has been overlooked for years, it's right next to OSU OKC, Oklahoma City. It's, it's a rough area as far as levelness is concerned. There were no protests, so unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right. Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. All right, 9B, 1 and 2, these are ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for denial at Planning Commission. We'll start with 9B1, this is at 17600 Southeast 104th Street, going from AA to PUD 1709. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak? Could the applicant come forward, please?
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So this is a, a PUD that is at 104th, just west of Peapley Road. What we did through this PUD is provide for the two-acre lot, minimum lot size for residential development. What this is, is I think a development that is in keeping with what this ward, and specifically this, this portion of Mr. Stone's ward is. It's a hodgepodge from five-acre lots to half-acre lots to one-acre lots. When you drive out there, it's kind of a mixed bag of different lot sizes. The two-acre lot size is rural in nature, I think that's in keeping with what this part of the city is. When you have no water and you have no sewer, this is the type of development in this part of the city that you can expect to have. This is not dissimilar to several other cases that have come through Councilman Stone's ward, in which the Planning Commission recommended denial, and ultimately, the city council approved it. So, we think what we have is in keeping with this part of the city, happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I don't, my eyes aren't quite as good as they used to be since I got on Councilman Mcatee's team, but I don't see any lots less than two and a half acres, do I?
As shown, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. As shown, that's.
As shown on that site plan. So this is a, kind of a conceptual site plan, when they actually go and plat it, things may change because of rights of way, et cetera.
Sure.
What our PUD accounts for is a minimum of two acres. This was just drawn by, I believe, an engineer to kind of show what may, what it may look like, but we provide for a minimum of two acres.
And then I had a couple of questions with the TEs.
Yes, sir.
And some of these, I guess, questions may be for staff. So, why the amendment to Base District RA2? And then also, the street stubs to the west and south, I was curious about.
So I, oh, well, so I'll tell you, I'll let Mr. Teener respond to why, I'll tell you why we couldn't agree to some of those. In terms of stubs to the, to the west and the south, as you're likely familiar, when you have these rural-type developments, you don't often have a lot of, of interconnectivity. You take away more land, and it's kind of one of the reasons we also have the fight sometimes on common areas and playgrounds. When you have these large lot sizes, people have their own common area. They've got enough room where they want their own playground, their own pool, they don't want the clubhouse. The same goes for street stubs. They want this, you know, their own little piece of the world, they don't want it to be interconnected with multiple other developments.
Right. Sorry, what question? So, the, the reasoning for the RA2, the base district to RA2, can you explain that to me? Because I thought once we, I thought the whole reason that we did the PUD was to really be able to focus down on the final use.
The RA2 is a, I want to say a new district, but it's probably been 10 years now. Initially, we had AA, which is a five-acre minimum, and we had RA, which is a one-acre minimum. We created the 2A, the RA2 to allow some flexibility with the developer, so they could, they could average the size of the lot based on including open space, so you could theoretically get under a two-acre lot if you've added open space in another part of your development. So this, but the minimum here, on average, is two acres, and we felt like it would be more appropriate to use that base district, since it's existing in the ordinance, than to use the modified PUD.
Are there any other limitations associated with that, RA2?
There, there are, there's, one of the requirements is the 300-foot separate frontage on the arterial street. That's really to minimize the number of driveways onto the arterial, and really, that's probably the, the most significant other requirement.
At the time of Planning Commission, there was a staff member here that was kind of going through the, the litany of things in that, that base zoning district. The concern I had was, in theory, I would be agreeable, except for any instance in which it conflicted with anything in our PUD, because, as Mr. Teener mentioned, there, there's a host of other things that I'm just not sure what it might do. We were fairly specific in our PUD as to lot sizes, architecture, all of those things. I'd hate to agree to that, because we're, we're clear in what, what it is we want to do, but by agreeing to that, I would hate for there to be, to be some bulk table, bulk standard table contained within the municipal code that had some tricky provision that would require my client to pay another $3,000 to rezone it again over some little provision, when we've been so specific.
And really, at the Planning Commission meeting, there, there wasn't really time to go through that zoning disclassification with David, to, to talk about those changes that might impact his development. The, the comprehensive plan recommends, you know, the rural development here.
Correct, which is five acres, and, you know, the, the problem with five acres is, with the, with the cost of the land out there, five-acre tracts aren't economical.
Guess, Todd, I'd ask you, since I recently drove through Ward Four and that got lost for a while. Mr. Box refers to it as a mixed bag, and so this is two-acre lots, what's your thought, what's your philosophy for your ward?
So, yeah, I, I like to see, I prefer to see a nice mix of smaller lots, meaning two acres or more, with the five-acre stuff. The problem out there is, five acres is extremely hard to afford. So when you look at housing and the cost of housing, you look at the price of that lot, whether it's five acres or a city lot, right? There's a formula that it falls into, you don't buy a $100,000 lot for a $200,000 home. You buy a $30,000 lot for a $180,000 home. So, the, the comprehensive plan in Ward Four, I have some issues with, because it basically takes everything, oh, east of Draper, I would say, which goes from Draper out to Pot County, and paints it five-acre lots, period, that's all we're doing out there, when it's really not the case of what's out there. It's, there's a big hodgepodge of one-acre lots, two-acre lots, there's some five-acre stuff, here's a 40-acre ranch, whatever the case may be. But, you know, I, I personally don't live on five acres. If someone next to me built on an acre or two acres, it doesn't offend me in any way. What I wouldn't want to see is someone to come in there with city lots, all of a sudden, next to five-acre lots. To me, that becomes a little strange, but for it to move around a little bit and help with the affordability, affordability of housing, I think it's a good thing. Also, when you look at the area out there, we talk about Boeing, we talk about Tinker, we talk about the growth going on there, there's needs for additional housing out there that currently.
That was going to be my next question, is, is this something that appeals to Tinker?
Oh, absolutely.
And I know their need for housing.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, they can go to Shawnee, they can go to Choctaw, where they can drive to northwest Oklahoma City, southwest Oklahoma City. So, to me, it makes sense that we do some development out there. I'm not for bringing in a, you know, 450-lot development in the middle of nowhere out there. But here, you know, too, we're talking about a total of 27 lots. 27 lots. It's just, it's, it's not a superdevelopment going on out here, so.
Well, I think, so for my, where I sit with the, the comp plan, Plan OKC, is that if we do start developing in those areas that are encouraging all of, you know, we do this more sprawl development, more and more development will happen there, so, which doesn't encourage density and has a number of negative effects on health, financial health for the city. So even though it's just 27 now, are we sprawling so that we're creating, you know, another 27 in a few years and so on down the road, rather than following the expertise of the planning staff to say, to really be financially resilient and healthy as a city, but in, in all of the ways that we might think of that, we need to be thinking about development that way. So that's just kind of where my mind is at with it right now.
Well, and I appreciate that point, and to that point, again, here we're talking about 27 lots. I would agree with you, we need to see more growth in downtown and, and in the more urban areas than we do outside in these areas. I don't think anyone's expecting this to become a metropolis out there. There's, there is current development out there, there's not much. There's a demand for it, and I can tell you, we don't come close to meeting that demand, but I do think it's important that we continue to offer some available housing out in this area. As a city, if we want to come in and blanket an entire area and say, nothing out here except for five acres, then I don't know what value it holds for the city. And I would suggest that the city maybe doesn't need that area.
I'm not in disagreeance with that. I would say that is a very valid point.
I mean, honestly, that's, that's how I feel, and that opens up a big can of worms, I know, for a lot of people. But, you know, again, this is somebody's property that they've, you know, paid for. They own this property, here's what they want to do with it. My first responsibility is, I look at the neighbors around this, this area, to say, is this going to negatively impact somebody there? Honestly, with two-acre lots, no, it won't. It will, if anything, it will probably help protect the neighbors. Once they go below that five-acre size, there are a ton of limitations on what they can and can't do with that land. But when it's this big a piece of land, you can go out there and have a hog farm if you want, and you might be stuck living next to it. So it's, this is, with these size of lots, it's almost beneficial for the neighbors.
So what do you want to do with it?
And I, I got a point, too, that I completely agree that we should not be expanding the density out on the outskirts of the city to a, an urban level. And so, like Todd said, this is 27 lots, each two and a half acres minimum of each lot, and so it's taking up a large amount of area just for 27 families, and so it's not increasing the density to a point to where it's going to stretch our, stretch our infrastructure overly. But if, if we were talking here and, and you're saying three-quarters of an acre lot, that would, I mean, there is a line there, and I don't know where the line is, but I, I think that we are above the line at the two and a half acre, two and a half acre lot, because we're taking up so much space for just 27. So if you, if we did the same exact amount of space right next to it for 27 homes, it still wouldn't really be expanding the, our infrastructure too much. But, like Todd said, if it gets down to urban levels, it, it would for sure, it would for sure be a problem, yeah.
Can I go ahead and make a motion? Anyone else got any thoughts, comments, questions? I would like to make a motion that we defer this item for the next council meeting, and I'm going to request that Mr. Box and the applicant and city manager, and maybe Aubrey, if we could get her into a meeting, and talk about the TEs associated with this, and what the impact those are on the developer. I, honestly, I mean, this is a good project, I like this project, I just want to make sure it's going to make, it's going to work for the developer and meet the city's needs as well.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second for a deferral of two weeks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And then we have item 9B2, this is at 11798 Southeast 119th Street, going from AA to PUD 1710. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this? I don't really need to hear from you again. What I'd like to go ahead and do is make a motion that we defer this item for two weeks for the same reasoning. I'm not quite as crazy about this project as I am the other one. It's got a couple of issues for me, but I still think it needs to be included in that discussion to see if we can't get a result.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any further discussion on the motion for deferral for two weeks? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to item 9C, ordinance on final hearing, this was recommended for approval, this is a special permit to construct a telecommunications tower in the R4 general residential and stockyard city transitional development overlay districts. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, do we have any one to speak on this? Would you like to talk about this a little bit more? I know we spoke on Friday a little bit, but, so everyone else is as familiar.
Sure. Once again, David Box, 522.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, I do have representatives of the site acquisition firm as well as T-Mobile. This is a special permit for a telecommunications tower. You'll, you'll note that there's not, the chamber's full of people like there have been in the past on telecom tower applications. The city has recently undertaken a process by which they have hired a consultant to review the RF data supplied in these cases. If, those of you who were here at the one at 16th and Penn, there was a tremendous amount of protest, and the consistent question that was asked by the residents was, why do we have to believe the operator's data? I mean, the city should be in a position of checking it. After that, Development Services has contracted with a, an RF consultant to review the data that's provided at these stages. And so, what we do now in these cases is, once we submit it, Development Services takes the application, they send it to the consultant who does an independent review of the RF data. So, it's worth noting, when you see these towers, you know, these, the telecom companies build towers as a means of last resort. They first try to improve their current infrastructure. Second, they try to co-locate. Only if they can't do those to fill the gap, do they then go ahead and, and seek to build a new tower. As we learned in the 16th and Penn, you have a bit of an expert yourself among your colleagues as Councilman Stone was a former RF engineer for, for one of the large companies. And I think what he would tell you is that they don't, you know, they don't build these for fun. I mean, they are significant investment, they only build them if it's absolutely necessary to fill a gap. As we continue to evolve in our use of technology, the ability to stream data is what is demanding that these new towers be built. At the outset of the telecom, you know, boom, it was thought that we, you know, built out the infrastructure for the ability for voice over the phone. It really wasn't anticipated that we'd have this significant need for, for data because of streaming services. But that's where we are, so we're having to come back in the core and, you know, increase the infrastructure to allow for, for what we use our phones for these days. And so, with that, we have a gap in this area. You've now seen, I think, four or five telecom tower applications, all kind of within the same part of the city over the last several months. This is the latest one. Not only do we believe there's a gap, your consultant did submit a report recommending approval based upon his independent review that there is in fact a gap, and what we provide here does, does fill that gap. The planning commission then recommended approval of this unanimously. There was no protest at the planning commission. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions. If you're like me and don't understand what these little maps look like and what they really mean, perhaps Councilman Stone or my RF engineer can, can talk about it. But we'd ask for your approval.
I just, I have a question. And how much are we paying that consultant to tell us that, yeah, it's really needed?
I do not know what the contract amount is on that, you know?
I'm not sure. We, we sent it out and they, they brought back bids. I think it's in the 19 to $2,500 range, depending on the complexity of the case.
And do we know how many of those they've come back with a negative, that now this tower's not needed?
I think, I think there's been three. I don't believe there's been a negative one. I'd have to check for sure.
All three have come back saying, yeah, it's needed?
That's what I remember. But I'll check that and confirm. There may have been one that, that they may have had some concerns with.
Yeah, my understanding is that the market for these consultants are, is so slim here that it's, they're also working for the tower, the cell tower companies. So, they're gonna come back largely with very similar opinions. But I would say, I appreciate that the applicant's proposed height is actually lower than what our consultant recommended. So, I think that actually speaks better to the project than what, what it otherwise could be, much, you know, 25 feet or so taller. If I'm doing that math, yeah. Okay, 25 feet. So, if, unless there's other questions, I would move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
9D is an ordinance on final hearing. So, in our procedures here, when we amend ordinances, we have three meetings. First is introduction, second is a public hearing, and the third is final consideration. And so, we had a presentation from Chief City a couple of meetings ago on this ordinance change regarding the disposition of property, and today could be final approval pending a motion.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9E is the second step of that process. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance, regarding an ordinance related to motor vehicles and traffic and general schedule of fees. This would probably be best known as the Parklet Ordinance Amendment, and there was a presentation on this at the last meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the public hearing for this ordinance change? Seeing none, we can move on to item 9F1. This is an ordinance to be introduced, so this would be the first step in this process set for public hearing April 23rd, final adoption May 7th relating to an update of the electrical code. And there's a couple of items here, but I think first maybe we'll get a presentation.
Yeah, David Adcock is here with Development Services Department to give us a presentation on these.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We're bringing to you today a recommendation of Oklahoma City's Electrical Code Commission to adopt the 2017 edition of the National Electric Code with amendments. The, the purpose of adopting up-to-date construction codes is to allow for innovation while continuing efforts to mitigate risk to life and property. As technology changes and emerges as new technology, and we need to find ways to make sure that we have codes that, that address the installation methods that are safe, and that's what the code does for us. This adoption offers several changes with the, again, emergency, emergence of some technology and, and growth of existing technologies such as electrical vehicle charging systems, photovoltaic installation systems, we're starting to see more of that, which are solar power systems, and LED technology. And another one is a, a new technology that uses actually the ceiling grid to power lighting. So, again, we need to keep our, our codes up to date, and, and as quick as technology is changing now, the code is trying to keep up. And that's why we're here again today to, to look at the 2017 edition. One of the most notable changes in this addition of this code with our amendments is the allowance of aluminum conductors. They are one-third to one-fourth of the cost, and in the past have not been allowed, but they have a new, actual, they have a new alloy that's made in the aluminum conductors that makes it much safer. It's been in the industry for years now, and our code commission has looked at it probably for the past 10 years. And this year came around to, to allowing that as a viable, safe installation method. So, that's one of the ones they're doing. So, if you have any questions?
I do. First, David, I would like to say thank you for all that you do. He has been fantastic at helping resolve any issues. He's always available, and you just always do a great job with that. The reason that aluminum wiring was originally gotten rid of, was it due to a, a low melt temperature, or what was the safety issue with that?
Exactly. The safety issue had to do with the, the actual makeup of the aluminum conductor. It was a much softer aluminum. The, the properties that, that actually made up the aluminum caused, the issue was at the termination, especially of receptacles and, and switches. Those terminations having dissimilar metals, being the aluminum and then a brass or a steel compression connection, they would heat up and cool off at different, different temperatures, which would cause a loose connection. And when you're dealing with electrical connections, a loose connection is heat and resulting in fire. And there are still today many insurance companies that won't insure apartments until they go through, back in the 70s when they were built with aluminum wiring, go in and change all that wiring. The, we're actually limiting the size of the aluminum used, so they still won't be used on, on the, the smaller wiring like receptacles, and it'll, it'll actually be the larger feeder conductors that are maintained through, that compression connections maintained through a torque setting and things like that. It's, it's managed and maintained a little better, so.
Well, thank you. Case in point, I knew he would know the answer to that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Public hearing will be next on the, on the slate for April 23rd. We also have item 9F2, a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the National Electrical Code. And so, this, this will also have a similar schedule. We've got a motion? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to another ordinance change, 9G, ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing April 23rd, final adoption May 7th. This relates to alarm permits and was really already previously explained by Chief City, so I don't think we're getting another presentation.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second for introduction. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9H1. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding these dilapidated structures? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution, a motion to adopt 9H2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at 9I1. This is a public hearing regarding a dilapidated structure in an HP Landmark district. This is at 711 Northwest 22nd. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9I2, the resolution declaring that this structure is dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J1. This is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion regarding these unsecured structures here listed? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9J2, declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9K1, a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings listed here, except for those that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion of 9K1? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found at 9K2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the item.
Real quick, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
This address, just real, I, I hope someone is watching Channel 20 right now or takes this information back to the people of Mayfair, because when I was knocking doors, this was very early a property that people were really, really concerned about. So, I know that, you know, we're going through this particular, you know, moment of passing this item, but this is about to make a lot of people on 46th and 47th Street feel a lot better, the neighborhood.
You're talking about item O?
On, if you look at, thank you for the clarification, K1O, the 2712 structure, next door to that is where the neighborhood association president and her family lives, small kids. Behind that was another woman that knocked their door. And in each instance, these were people who were really concerned about drugs and crime. And no joke, about a week or two before Councilwoman Hammond and I, our election, this property made it to the evening news. And unfortunately, next door was my yard sign in the president of their neighborhood association's yard. So, this action is gonna truly make people feel safer, and so I really appreciate the council.
This is the property, I believe, that you're talking about. Is this the one, I mean, that we've all been on an Odyssey on?
You, yes, you have definitely.
I mean, I get like, I get a briefing on this every two weeks.
It's 2712 Northwest 46, but it is the one that you and Chief of Staff Steve Hill have heard about, Laura Johnson.
Yeah. So, this could be, I know there's been a lot of steps in this process, and maybe this is just the latest, but there's been court cases and arrests, and, I mean, it's been, it's been one for the record books. Is that real, is that the same situation?
This one, I believe, is unsecured at this time. I'm Chad Davidson, code enforcement. But I believe we've probably issued some property maintenance citations on it as well. I'll have to check on that, though, to be sure.
Are we getting the picture up here? Laura's the, this is like half her job right now. She knows. Laura Johnson, is this, is this the situation?
Okay, this is not what Councilman Cooper is talking about. If you would show the property at 2712 Northwest 46th Street, which is item 9KO. Okay, so.
But it is that.
This is not the picture of that. This is a property where there was a criminal activity, a stabbing, and the neighbors are concerned about it. It is one that Councilman Cooper saw on his voyage through the election process. Mayor, the ones that you are talking about are two properties on Northwest 42nd Street.
Oh, okay.
The can report that the sheriff's sale closed on that property Friday, and the new owner is taking possession.
Sorry for taking us down that path, so.
Yeah.
Different property, but.
But also.
Is that what you were talking about, though?
No, I was.
He was talking about a different property from the ones that you were talking about.
But just a few streets from each other, and I really want to commend Laura.
Also Odysseys, but not the same.
Okay.
But seriously, thank you for your assistance during the campaign.
I'm told we still need a second.
Second.
Okay, very good. All right, any further discussion on these items and the resolution at 9K2? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are at 9L, a resolution approving the revisions of police policies here listed and.
And these are updates to the police department policies, mostly just clean up. Policy 250, it was clarifying that it just made it more gender, gender neutral. And then on policy 556, on the use of vehicles and equipment, one was to clarify a use for K-9 officers, that they can leave their vehicles running while it's unattended for the health and safety of the animal. And then also, they just moved some language out of one policy into, into this one that clarified that employees cannot disengage the anti-theft devices on their vehicles. And so, it's just some clarification language for the policies.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9M, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Eric Thompson while he continues to require rehabilitation, et cetera. There's no known reason for an executive session. I'd entertain a motion.
Move the item.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9N1, this is a joint resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment against the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority without admitting liability in the amount of $60,000 in the case Palacios versus the City of Oklahoma City. No known reason for an executive session here, so I'd entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 901, claims recommended for denial. We have A through D, as E was stricken. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yes, oh, please come forward and might mention which item you're here to speak on and your name and addresses.
Yes, I'm speaking on item C.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you all have in front of you, but I recently received a letter that I claimed, my claim that I submitted to the city had been denied. And do you have anything in front of you regarding this? Do you, can, can I know what it is you do have, please, so I make sure that? Do you have just the letter denying the claim, or?
Yes, it's a rec, the letter recommending that council deny.
Okay. Since you have that, I'd like to draw your attention to the last page, please, in which the Assistant Municipal Counselor states that in, in the first paragraph, it says, that I did not, oh, I'm sorry, in the second paragraph, it says, "Claimant has provided no evidence to support his allegations that there was a defect in his sewer line or its connection to the private, to its private line." And I did provide the, when I filed the claim, that information, but I feel like it was either ignored or just disregarded, and I'd like to provide it to you right now, if I, if I Basically, what is.
Mr. Smith, this is new information, correct?
No, I provided this, at least a copy of the letter from, from the plumber at the time I filed the claim. Basically, what brings me here is that I live on 122nd, just east of May, and Basically what brings me here is that I live on 122nd, just east of May, and in November, I live in a 2,500 square foot home, and I live by myself. And so I, and I have three baths. And in November, I had a family reunion, my family was there, and that's when I started to notice a backup in a couple of the bathrooms. Now, living by myself, I only use one bathroom primarily, so I hadn't noticed any problem prior to that. But on this particular day, my family did notice that I was having some problems with the commode. So I called the plumber out. Plumber came out, tried to snake the line, could not find any problem. Then he put a camera in the line, could not find the problem. And then he asked me if he told me that he needed to dig in order to figure out what was going on with my sewer line. And so he did that, he dug in my backyard about six feet, and then he said he couldn't find the problem and that he needed to go into my neighbor's backyard, and which he did do. But he asked me to get permission from my neighbor for him to do, to dig in their yard. So I called my neighbor, and it was at that time that my neighbor informed me that the city had been out in May of that year and had installed a new sewer line in the causeway between our houses. And I wasn't aware of that. And so they, my neighbor sent me a picture, and that's the picture that you have of that green pipe, sent me a picture of the, the pipe that they installed in the causeway. And so I then called the city to find out what happened in May, and they told me that they did install a new main line in between our houses, but that there was no problem that they knew of that connecting to my line. So I told them that I did not know whether my plumber was trying to get over on me or what, charged me more money, but I didn't know really what the procedures were. He, he offered to call my plumber to see what their intent was and to get some information. So he did, and he called me back, and he said, "Based on what they told me, they do need to dig down close to the main to figure out what your problem is." So I recommend, and he also said that I haven't had any problems with Mr. Ruder, and so I, I think they're giving you the, the straight poop on what it is they need to do. Because at that time, they had told me that it was going to cost close to $2,000. So I went ahead and authorized Mr. Ruder to do the digging. And when they did, you'll notice that in the, I don't have a copy with me, I highlighted what Mr. Ruder said, and basically said it, "He dug into my neighbor's yard, and he found where there was a connection." I draw attention to what Mr. Ruder says in the paragraph, it says, it says, in the first paragraph, he says, "We then went to your neighbor's backyard and dug down on their side of the fence to about eight feet deep. We found that a rubber Fernco had been connected to the green SDR pipe." The green SDR pipe is the pipe that was installed by the city. And so what he's saying is that there was a rubber Fernco that was attached to connect me to the main line, but in the second paragraph, he said it was not a proper fitting and with that connection that the city had done. And he says, "That's what caused my problem." Now, in the Assistant City Councillor's letter, she said, "Mr. Smith waited seven months. I, I wasn't even aware that there was a problem until November." And basically, what my plumber says is that, in that seven-month window, when, when the city filled the hole where they, where they put the main line in, that it, that it, the pressure of it disconnected the connection to my line, and that's what caused my problem. So I wouldn't, that's why I waited, I didn't, I didn't know there was a problem until seven months later. So I provided this information to the city, but they still denied my claim, saying that I provided no evidence that the city had, had done anything wrong, so.
I mean, Kenny, the law is pretty clear. He's got to discover it before he can put the city on notice.
Right.
Mr. Smith, can I ask you a question? How long have you lived at this residence?
I've lived there since 2005, sir.
Have you had any sewer line work done there previously?
I had not.
Thank you.
In fact, I wasn't even aware that I had, was, that my backyard was a causeway and where a sewer, sewer line was until, until my neighbor told me. I was out of state at the time they did the work in May, and so I wasn't even aware any work had been done until, until November of this year.
I guess my question is, does a notice go out to the, to those neighbors that are within when we, when we work on those sewers, sewer lines?
I didn't receive a notice, but I did, the, the maintenance person that I talked to at the city said that, that what brought them out there was a TV request. I'm not sure what that is. But he said, "Anybody in my neighborhood could have called in and said there was a problem with the main, and that's what caused them to go out there initially to begin with."
Yes, Chris, do we, do we provide any notice when we're doing work like that, to the, just that they know that?
We do, we do, in the, in the affected yard or in the easement, we do try to notify the residents that are there, the ones that would be affected.
But if the easement falls on his neighbor's yard, is it possible, right, that he wouldn't see the, the notice?
It's, it's very possible, yes, sir.
I'd move we approve the claim.
Second.
So we can, we can.
Confession of judgment.
What's the mechanics of that? It was listed on here as recommended for denial.
We'll have to bring it back for approval as a confession of judgment.
Yeah, okay. So withdraw your motion? And we'll defer it, I get?
Yes, just move to strike this.
Yeah, maybe move to strike.
And it'll be on next time for a confession of judgment.
I moved to strike.
Okay. You can do that, that's a motion you make. Move to strike, okay. All right, we've got, we'll handle that one first, I guess. We need to vote on that, right, Francis? Yeah, all right, we've got a motion and a second to strike this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. And then the guidance from the council to staff is to bring this back at the next meeting as a, as a confession of judgment, where you would receive what's your, your claim, correct?
Which means? Which means it'll be approved at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then there's a process we go through to get the actual check.
Thank you, sir. Do I need to come back here?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
However, I would say, as your word to councilperson, you're always welcome to come back, Richard.
Thank you.
That leaves us with items under, under nine O1, items A, B, and D. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any of these items recommended for denial? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
E was.
E was struck at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, we've got a motion, did I hear a second? And a second, to deny the other claims. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, this brings us to 10, on page 25 of your printed agenda, 10A1. These are claims recommended for approval. No known reason to go into executive session, we can take these all at one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. This brings us to item 11, items from council. We'll handle the business first, and then we'll go around the horseshoe. We already struck item 11A, which leaves us with item 11B, which has been brought to us by Councilman Stonecifer. Would you like to discuss just the, the purpose for going into executive session, I guess, and then make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move this into executive session to obtain legal advice in light of actions that happened after the city council last met. So I'd move it into executive session.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the, on going into executive session? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will handle that at the end of our other business, and so why don't we go around the horseshoe? We'll start over here with Ward 8.
Nothing today, thank you.
Just want to say thank you to our city staff. We had our how-to-do business with the City of Oklahoma City Forum on April the 2nd, and we had a pretty good turnout for the morning at the Zoo Education Centers. So first, thank you to Dwight Lawson for coming and greeting everyone. Also, thank you to Amy Simpson, Eric Winger, and also David Adcock for taking time out of their morning to inform our communities about how they can be a part of the process when it comes to doing business with the City of Oklahoma City. So we did go Facebook Live for this, so those who may not have seen it, you can go to Facebook and look at it. And we will also see what, we'll have a different subject for May. So be looking for a, a new conversation in form when it pertains to Ward 7, and also with Oklahoma City for, for future.
Yeah, this coming Saturday at 10 o'clock at the New Hope Baptist Church at Northwest 30th and Meridian, Craig Freeman, our new city manager, has offered to come and speak to the neighbors. We've invited the neighborhoods surrounding there to come and join. I know there's other activities going on, but this was scheduled before then, so if you're not going to one of the other activities, we'd encourage you to come and hear Craig talk about Oklahoma City. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything? Councilman Griner? Okay. All right, that concludes items from council. We will now go to city manager reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so we've got two reports today. I know we have Michael Burns, who's supposed to be here from the Dodgers, but we'll go ahead and take care of this one, on the Better Streets Annual Report, first with Eric Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Council. So we have a, a annual report, our first annual report for Better Streets, Safer City for presentation today. If you do, if you do not have a hard copy of this already, I'll make sure that we have hard copies of this made available. It looks like Francis is handing those out now. So obviously, when we began this program, it was anticipated to be just a little over a two-year implementation of Better Streets, Safer City. We've had a lot of engagement with departments, and so this has been a huge effort for Public Works Planning and the Parks Department, as we've assembled the list of projects with the Community Advisory Board. And we've just, we've had a number of people participating on this. And so what you find is this first report, it includes an overview that it just outlines this as a temporary sales tax. $240 million over 27 months is the anticipated collections. And then it outlines the five different project categories that you see here on your screen. Resurfacing at $168 million, streetscapes at $24 million, sidewalks at $24 million, trails at $12 million, and finally bicycle infrastructure, also at $12 million. We have included in the annual report itself a lot of graphics, and I think as you start to look at that cover to cover, you're going to see that we've summarized a lot of the information. Also making this available upon the council's receipt of this today, putting this online so that those that wish to just kind of get a snapshot of what was accomplished. The report carries us through December 31st of 2018, and so all the information in there does not include the recent approvals that were on council today or the amendment that was on our last meeting. But think of this as, as a true annual report. And this just summarizes and shows all the categories of work. The financial revenue through December 31st, $96 million received, $43 million encumbered and $10 million expended. And so at this point, we are really on that 50% mark of having about 50% of each of the project categories approved and moving forward. With this year in 2019, we're working to have that remaining balance of projects authorized going through, again, the advisory board under the leadership of Hal McKnight, and a lot of the volunteers that are also doing that work as well. I'm going to fast forward just a little bit. A lot of the information is included in your report, and I can answer questions as we get to the end. But as we really summarize, we look at the city map that you see here that's on screen. This is also the second to the last page of the report. This is a location of each of the projects that has been approved in those five different categories. So you're going to find that there's a lot of street, a lot of sidewalk, a lot of bike lane work that's been approved. The larger boxes that you see on this map are those residential resurfacing projects, but, but significant numbers, as we look at the final slide and really the outtake, 90 miles of resurfaced arterial streets, 37 miles of resurfaced residential, 7th Street enhancement projects, 30 miles of sidewalk, 32 miles of bike infrastructure, and then we're working towards 42 miles of enhanced trails. But my appreciation really goes out to Aubrey McDermid with planning, and Doug Cooper with the Parks Department, and our associated staffs that have worked really diligently on this. Shannon Cox is the, is the author of our annual report this year, so our appreciation to her in getting us laid out and organized for that as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about either Better Streets or the annual report for 2018.
I guess I get a lot of calls on sidewalks, as we've, 30 miles of sidewalks have been constructed, a few more miles to have a sidewalk.
So again, if we look at the annual report, this is about 50%. So now, I wouldn't just automatically say there's another 30 miles. Some sidewalks are a lot more difficult to construct than others, but I would tell you about half. And so as we get ready, hopefully at the end of 2019, we'll have those final totals for you.
And not all of these have been completed yet, right? This is with what was approved this year, that's what will be completed?
Correct. So these, these aren't all constructed as of now, but these are the ones that have been authorized, and either they're in construction, it'll be constructed or starting construction this year. For example, on the streetscapes and the street enhancement projects, we're just now starting the consultant selection processes for those, getting those projects scoped and having those designs readied. Some of the things that you may see at a future council meeting are us bringing those preliminary reports showing what that streetscape will actually look like before we actually build it. Community engagement and some other components that are a little bit different than just a resurfacing. Thank you.
When we do the, by the way, this is, I love this so much. This is so, so much happiness in my heart, so happy voters approved it. When we do the arterial resurfacing, will that include sidewalks, or is it just straight resurfacing of a street?
So under Better Streets, it's just the street, but also the sidewalk is just the sidewalk. So the sidewalk locations are different than the street locations, but there could be some overlap, but they're approved separately.
And that's in contrast, Eric, to the 2007 bond, where the policy was, everywhere we resurface a street, we build a sidewalk. And then that was deemed to be, well, maybe not all those streets needed sidewalks, so let's be more strategic with the sidewalks. So now it's basically two separate projects, right? Is that what you're saying?
It is, and so the streets projects really follow our street enhancement program, whereas the sidewalk, the trail, and the bike lane, bike are, are part of the BikeWalk OKC plan. So absolutely, where the streets are needed, we're working on streets. Where the sidewalks are needing, we're building sidewalks. Where bikes are needed, we're building bike infrastructure and bike lanes and so forth. But, but yes.
Doing it that old way didn't look very smart. I mean, in my opinion, I mean, because we were building sidewalks where it really didn't make any sense. And there were thousands of places that we could have built sidewalks that made a lot of sense, so.
So yeah, like, you know, like, if I could channel James Cooper, you want a sidewalk on every street, but if you're not going to build a sidewalk on every street, you want to put them where they're most needed, right?
Where they're the most needed. And yet, one of the places for the arterial resurfacing that has my full attention is between, on Western, between Wilshire and 122nd, and that is where a pedestrian was run over once by a hit-and-run, run over a second time because the person didn't see them there. And moreover, as we're about to do this street enhancement to Old Downtown Britain, right, you have Western that has the potential to feed right into that if we had sidewalks there too. So point very well taken, yeah, let's use our, let's be responsible steward of taxpayer dollars and spend money wisely. I just wonder if this particular arterial resurfacing isn't a missed opportunity only insofar as like, it, it provides this logical connectivity to this district that's trying to be walkable, better connected by public transportation. I just wonder, are there moments like that where we can enter, be anybody, "Well, here's where we can make this more walkable to fit what the larger plan was already?"
So I think two comments on Northwestern. We actually have some existing work north of 164th Street that's a part of an '07 bond project, as the mayor mentioned. And it is receiving sidewalks, and in front of the elementary school that's there, it's actually receiving sidewalks on both sides of the street, and it's been coordinated with that project. On some of the other Better Streets projects, perhaps, as some of those that are, say, from Wilshire to 122nd, it's possible there might be some sidewalks with that project. I need to actually go online myself and check too. But if we go to OKCGov/bettersafer, I mean, we can find those locations, and if they're not included, I would suggest to the council and through the citizens advisory process, we have the ability, this year 19, to add additional possible sidewalk projects, or streetscapes, or some of those other project categories. And if we are not able to do that specifically as a part of the sales tax, potentially bond funds or other sources that we may not know yet might come available, but we definitely want to get those locations prioritized. So knowing what the priorities are of each ward is helpful, so that we can pass that information forward and create, create projects.
Thank you.
I think, just if I might take one minute, Mr. David Nema, who had actually spoke just a little bit earlier, I did receive an update specifically on, on the resurfacing project that's on Western from, from Wilshire to 122nd. He is here? I see he's still in the audience, and so that project is actually underway. It's three miles. The concrete work is complete on the south two portions. The milling operations for the south side will actually begin next week. So it's a complete resurfacing all the way to 122nd with all the work to be finalized in July of 2019. So over the next several months, it'll be a busy quarter, or it'll be restored to new condition here shortly.
I think it's worth noting, because you can get bogged down in the different revenue streams, but all in, what happened in 2017 is putting almost $800 million into street repairs and street resurfacing. And it's the biggest, as you've heard me say, the biggest street repair project in our city's history and as large as Maps 3 and probably a similar scale as what Maps 4 will be. And it's very important to keep talking about that because I still get people every day who don't know anything about it, didn't know it's happening, and they want to know about it because it's their highest priority for our city funding. And thank you for working with me. As you go to OKC.gov/bettersafer, there is that very interactive and very informative map, but if you just want a list, there's also that ability near the top of the page as well. And it's hundreds of projects organized by those that are completed, those that are underway, and those that are still under consideration, and you still have almost $300 million that has yet to be officially allocated. So there's still some prioritization possible from the members of this council, working with the citizen board.
And that's inclusive of the tax and the bond, so.
Yes, right, yeah. And so I, I know that citizens don't want to differentiate between all these different revenue streams, they just want to hear the big dollar amount that you're putting into it. So thank you very much. Any other comments for Eric? Oh, can I ask you one thing while you're here? Just a one-minute recap on where we are with streetlights since our last meeting?
Absolutely, happy to do that. So since the last council meeting, and there was a lot of discussion on streetlights and streetlight progress, and just recalling that we had OG&E also present on the status of streetlights. Our first beginning today, this afternoon, is our weekly meetings with OG&E as we work through a lot of the troubled issues in Oklahoma City with just a lot of lights that are out due to wire theft or some damages. And so what I would report since the last meeting, ODOT has actually, or excuse me, OG&E has completed repairs on I-40, Meridian to Council's now been restored. They found bad wire at that location that was underground. I-40 Portland, I-40 Meridian, and I-40 Council, the wire theft at each of those locations has been restored. Those lights have been relamped. They have run into a few issues. So a couple of the locations that were being reported, they're being found to be private lighting, even though it maybe looks like a streetlight, it's just a high-powered private light. So they're actually getting that information back to those callers or those that are contacting. We have also confirmed that a lot of the work that's in the construction areas, the one that's probably the most called in is I-235, I-44. Those lights are out for months, if not maybe more than a year for the I-235 interchange work that's being done by ODOT. There are lights that are, that are lit at 63rd, and there's lights that are south of there, but the interchange will be, will be dark. I mean, they're just in construction at this moment.
We have no jurisdiction over that project because it's, over that area because it's under ODOT's control.
So we do. When ODOT finishes the work and constructs the new lights, we will then have jurisdiction in maintaining the newly constructed light system.
Similar story along I-40 and the Boulevard for right now.
Correct, yep. There is work underway on the Robinson Avenue Bridge. The Robinson Avenue Bridge has lights that are out due to wire theft, and those are in repair now as are the lights on Walker from Southwest Second to Southwest Seventh. So those are, those are being restored. And then lastly, on our Project 180 Lights, city crews were able to restore 20 of the pedestrian lights in the last couple of weeks. There's a number to go. We're going to engage additional contracting to expedite that process, to get the rest of the downtown relamped and upgraded to the LED. And again, with those firm commitments, that we'll have this work done in summer of 2019.
Thank you, Eric. We'll keep having you back on that topic.
Thank you.
And we have a, we have a law enforcement meeting this afternoon on the same topic, so we're working it from multiple angles. So thank you.
Welcome.
Hal McKnight has signed up to speak on this, on this report on Better Streets. If, Hal, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Hal McKnight, 7200 ML King is my address. And good morning, Mayor, good morning, City Council. I would like to address one of the most passionate things I have in my life, and that's our trail system in Oklahoma City. We have come a long way. Maps 3 has done three wonderful projects. One is not complete. We've done the West River Trail, which has gone from the river all the way north to Lake Overholser. We've completed the Will Rogers Trail, which starts at the river and connects to Lake Hefner. And we are in the process of building a 14-mile trail around Draper Lake, which is going to be a wonderful trail and should be completed this summer. That will give us approximately 110 miles of multi-use trail in our city. We have come a long, long way. The Maps 3 Sales Tax Extension that I'm fortunate enough to be on the committee for the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board, we have gone in and are working the trail at Lake Hefner, the south half, resurfacing it, making it much safer. Last summer, a survey was done by the Oklahoma City Running Club where 1.4 million people were counted as trail users in 2018 at the trails. Incredible number of people enjoy that quality of life. Trails definitely stand for quality of life as well as great exercise, health. We need to continue that momentum. We still have a ways to go. Our trails have been built, but we haven't had the funding to do amenities. And a lot of citizens want to see amenities like restrooms, like water fountains, like signage. The trail at Hefner, we are going to be putting a trail signage package out there. That will be the first signage that, that we have done. Our, our trails are great, but we still haven't, have that next step to go, including connectivity. We need to connect the trails. We need to connect the trails just to each other, of course, but also to neighborhoods and to parks. When, we always need more trails. As I said, trails and sidewalks definitely represent health, quality of life, plus they create needed infrastructure that save lives. Our city should be very proud of what we've been able to do in trails and in sidewalks. In sidewalks, Oklahoma City basically had not built any sidewalks since the 60s until funding came from Maps 3. So we continue to get very positive results back from that. The old line of build it and they will come certainly applies. We really hope that we can continue this momentum that we have seen with Maps 3 in Maps 4. We need the funding to move all the trails together and to improve the infrastructure and to improve the amenities. Thank you. Any questions?
A comment briefly. When I was knocking doors, I heard, you know, about the five same things over and over again, schools, streets, homelessness, public transportation. And yet, overall of it, I would hear very often people say they wanted to see Maps 4 expand across the city. To the mayor's point, I feel like Better Streets Safer City is that expansion, it's the start of it, and those trails were, that's part of it. It tells us what's possible, right? How to expand what's happened down here across the rest of the city. And I think those trails are, I think they're the hint of where we can go. And so I took some notes here talking about how do you bring amenities to those trails and how do you connect those trails to parks? I think this is kind of the beginning of what a Maps 4 can kind of do.
Yes.
Hal, I've got a request that, you know, at some point, there'll be a section of the trails that will go through southwest Oklahoma City, in particular Ward 5. Originally, I think it's scheduled, part of it to go on southwest 119th Street, but then cut back north to 104th. I would suggest that you all consider not going as far south as 119th, but stopping along Portland Avenue where it terminates at I-44 and cut over going east on 104th Street and not go to 119th Street. Because then 104th will cut across the city of Moore, which has agreed, my understanding, to build a trail that'll connect Draper going west. So don't go to 119th Street. Save your money. Begin on 104th and go directly east to Draper. Now, I'm sure that'll be the very last segment of any trails that are built in Oklahoma City, but when you do, don't let it go to 119th, go to 104th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, we are excited about what's to come for the Katy Trail and the connectivity that we're going to have in the northeast community for that area and also with the Better Streets Safer City resurfacing of 23rd Street to also help to connect that area. So just sitting now with my first meeting on the Trails Committee, it's been exciting to, to hear of the other excitement with the, the members that are a part, to know about those trails and learn more about what's to come and also the greatness that exists with us being more healthy and wanting to be a part of those trails too. So I'm, I'm happy about that.
Thank you, thank you. I might mention, it's been a real pleasure and honor to work with Parks and Recreation, Public Works and Planning. Recently approved is the new blueprint for moving forward for trails and sidewalks and infrastructure, which is the Bike Ped Plan that came from Planning. And so we now have a very good map to move forward. We just need the dollars and support to make that happen. But it's, it's, it's a wonderful day out there, and when I get out of this, I'm going to go ride the trail.
I just wanted to mention that Hal is the chairman of the committee of the advisory committee. We really do appreciate his leadership.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any talk of connecting Route 66 Park to the Overholser Trail?
There's been talk, and I, and I think that's part of the connectivity that is this next phase, that we need, we need to connect the trails and a continual tapestry out there. And we have a very large city, as we know. But also to work and connect to the parks and the neighborhoods.
But that park is just so close already to a trail, it seems to be, it seems to continually be kind of ignored. I've mentioned it all the time, but I, I feel like the, the west side of Lake Overholser needs to have a trail. It, it doesn't make any sense that there isn't a trail over there.
Agreed.
Okay. Glad.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so next we have Michael Burns here with the Oklahoma City Dodgers.
Well, good morning, members of the council, mayor. It's valuable to be able to share a little bit about what's going on in the world of the Dodgers. So thank you, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Anderson, for helping to coordinate this. We, Tom's sharing our stakeholder report that we produced at the end of the 2018 calendar year, really, that really highlights and celebrates a lot about what went on with the franchise and our organization. I pulled out a couple of the topics that I'll share this morning as we can visit about the state of the Dodgers. Off the top, highlighting a little bit about the, the end of last season, we had one of the strongest attended years in the last 10 years, actually the second strongest since 2008. A lot of that was driven by our group sales. Group sales is going to consist of so many different small entities, groups of 10 or more. It might be an organization coming out. It could be Girl Scouts like last Saturday night. It could be any number of businesses that want to come out to the ballpark and utilize that amenity. And so we're really pleased with that growth. Our literacy program that we do in conjunction with Sonic and Read OKC saw close to 400,000 minutes. So we utilize a number of the tools to really make that attractive to the youth in our community and celebrate them with first pitch opportunities and the ability to use sweets and entertain their friends and some of those types of things. And then we were part of the Copa de la Diversión, which is a minor league baseball-wide initiative related to outreach in the Latino community. And as it's referenced up there, we were one of the top 10 most popular designs related to alternate brands that we created, and I'll, I'll touch on that in a moment. At, at the conclusion of the season, what we were recognized with was Baseball America, our industry publication. They identify at each level, triple A, double A, single A, outstanding organizations. And so we were recognized with the Bob Friedus Award, which really highlights long-term excellence in organizational, in organizational operations, as well as commitment to the community and things that you're doing to really be more than just baseball. And so J.J. Cooper highlights a couple of the elements that really transitioned to what we were doing. Last year was the launch in partnership with Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department of our OKC Dodgers Rookie League. This past Saturday was opening day of Rookie League Season 2, and really pleased with the growth that we've seen. We have over 40% growth one year to the next, so over 300 participants this year. And really wanted to emphasize the strength of the Dodgers brand, to use our marketing messaging, to get more youth involved, but also make it fun. So they're all representing the Dodgers. They all have different versions of our marks and logos. We're providing a considerable amount of the equipment to make sure that it can be as turnkey as possible for those families that want to participate. And we've had a great relationship with Parks and Recreation in the effort to grow this, and we expect great results over the future years. I referenced a moment ago, the Copa de la Diversión. The challenge for minor league baseball was to identify a brand identity, alternate identity, that we could utilize as an outreach in our community. And so what that became was Cielo Azul de Oklahoma City. And we use that celebrating the blue skies of our community, and that became a great platform for going out into the community, having so many conversations with stakeholders to help understand how can we better recruit, how can we better welcome members of the Latino community to our games and make them better representative of our overall fan base. And last season, there were eight games that we utilized this alternate branding, and that became the, really the platform for different game experience, different music being played at the ballpark, different food and beverages that we were providing. Our executive chef got really excited about this opportunity and came up with some, some great additional items. So that'll be returning this year in 2019. I mentioned that this was really part of an initiative that minor league baseball, our governing body overall, had identified. In 2018, we were one of 33 teams to participate in this. Ultimately, we were chosen as one of the five best. We're one of the five finalists in implementation in our local community. This has now grown to 72 teams in minor league baseball that'll be doing this in 2019, and I expect over time, all teams will be doing this in some form or fashion. So really pleased with how that went and what we learned about our brand and what we learned about our business by having that outreach. We formed a partnership with the LCDA and had the ability through jersey sales at the end of the, the eight games, as well as some other fundraising through our ticket sales to, to give back to the LCDA as well, and expect that partnership to continue. A number of our partners really help us drive quality of life in our community, and we're thankful for that. So I referenced our literacy program that we do with Sonic. We have, Devin helps us with a STEM-focused education program that provides tools for motivating students. The teachers have the ability to, to utilize in their classrooms in the third and fourth grades. We have a great program with Integris. We did this on Friday night where we celebrate our home run for life, so five times each year. We have a great recovery story, someone that had, and, you know, medical hardship, that we were able to bring out, the medical professionals and their family, and have them reunite in some, in some way. But then let them have a celebratory run around the bases and really get our fans to, to, to show their support to that family. We'll have military recognition that we'll be doing again. So, so many of these programs are driven by our corporate partners telling us, how can we affect the quality of life in Oklahoma City and use our brand to do that? And we're thankful for those relationships. Our challenge in utilizing the, the ballpark is how can it be utilized beyond simply just Dodgers baseball games? And we have 70 baseball games at home, and that's the bulk of our summer, but there's so many other opportunities, whether that's through nonprofit walks or runs, whether that's through public events like the Fan Fest we held in, in March or a Fall Festival, or any number of events, high school baseball, the Phillips 66 Big 12 Baseball Championship, which will be here in May. We had a monster truck event last fall, which is a unique one and probably one of a kind. And so many other uses of our meeting spaces and just the facility in general. So we challenge ourselves internally in how can we constantly keep the asset that the city has provided to us as active as possible to get people downtown and come into the Bricktown area. In 2015, we formed a nonprofit, the OKC Dodgers Baseball Foundation, and a little bit of the results on how that has grown here in the last, really particularly the last 18 months or so. Incredible outcomes from in-stadium fundraising, whether that's through concession, utilizing nonprofits at concessions, or whether that's used jersey auctions or other types of nonprofit fundraising opportunities, ticket sales. Over $300,000, that was a, that was a really high watermark, actually in all three of these categories, that the foundation saw this past season. Gifts and Kind as well, highly significant. And overall, through some of those partner programs, as well as minor league baseball-wide initiatives, we were participating in 50 or more programs that we, that we utilized to make sure that the experience at the ballpark is different, it's unique, and that we're affecting more than just simply baseball fans. As a recap, in last season, one of the more significant improvements to the ballpark was investments made to the old restaurant space, which has now been transitioned to the Oklahoma Sports Hall of Fame. And a great space, adding to the amenities in the Bricktown area. It was great in partnership with the city that we made that space available and ready to operate. And so they just celebrated their one-year anniversary of being open to the public. Moving in this offseason, we had some large-scale projects, two of which were as a result of the 2017 GO bond. Being on the field this past weekend for the first time was significant. We have beautiful green grass again after a long offseason of really staring at dirt and mud. But a full renovation of the, the playing surface itself, which is highly technical, and I learned so much about all of the quality control that goes into that. But most significantly, an element of water reclamation that was part of that project and, and really driven by the city manager's office to make sure that we could take that step. So currently, there's 30,000 gallons of water being stored under the field in the, under 30,000 gallons of water being stored under the field, under the playing surface itself, that'll be utilized for irrigation and properly irrigating the field moving forward. LED field lights was another improvement that was made this past offseason, and then a seating amenity, our baseball patio, our baseline patio, which is immediately popular, and almost sold out for the season at this point as well. On the field, the one part that I don't control, we have already completed five games, so 135 more to go, but five games at home this past weekend. We're two and three. We have some of the more talented players in the Dodgers minor league baseball system, so great quality of play on the field for our fans to come out and see, including Tony Gonsolin, who was the minor league baseball player of the year, pitcher of the year for the Dodgers last year. 13 players that have seen Major League Baseball time, 11 of them were actually in the major leagues last year, so just really great quality of play. And new field staff. And the reason I point that out, one of the things that was significant to me this past Sunday, we do kids run the bases following the game. Immediately following the game, I see Jeremy Rodriguez, one of our new coaches, down there at home plate, high-fiving every one of those kids that came running around, and having that experience on the field. So, clearly, a field staff represented by Jeremy that gets it, and understands that our fans are important to the game, and we're thankful for what they're going to bring to our community while they're living here. As I mentioned, early in the season, so we have many games to go, but we're looking to defend our division title, and hope that we're going to have a lot of success on the field, but more importantly, really affect members of our community here the rest of this summer. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Went to games Saturday and Sunday, and I must say, the field is absolutely amazing. It is beautiful, and everyone was just happy because this is when you know spring is here. And this is my disclaimer, I am a baseball fan. And I have also criticized the mayor on his pitch from the... It was good. The pitch form was really good.
I do have to thank you for your efforts in controlling the weather in your ward this past weekend, because it was beautiful.
You ask, and you shall receive. But I thank you for all you do, and also for the experience, because just my experience in itself was amazing, so I know that other fans are getting that same experience. Thank you.
Maybe you can get Nikki to throw a pitch and see that.
We will work on that.
Do not compare me to the mayor.
Maybe we can have side-by-side video.
I do throw like a girl.
From the mound, Nikki, remember, from the mound.
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the Cielo Azul program. I recently finished a biography of Roberto Clemente, who was a Latino trailblazer in baseball. And so, the importance of connecting that community we have here, you know, he really opened up the way for, and inspired a lot of young folks in the '70s, in the Latino community to go out and play baseball. So, I appreciate having a little bit more of accessibility and representation in that aspect for our team here.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Mr. City Manager, anything else on your reports?
Yes.
Okay, and if people want to see the claims and payroll that's marked on the agenda, they can do so by going to OKC.gov and looking at our agenda. We now have some citizens to be heard who have signed up. Ken Babichuk? And in this context, if you wouldn't mind limiting your remarks to three minutes, you 're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Last time I was here, you passed a resolution to loan the First National Bank, I think $42 million of the TIF district fund for that district, correct?
Yeah, so we passed a resolution that allowed us to, it authorized us to, we'd already had the TIF in place, the TIF commitment, and this allowed us to be able to do $25 million, to borrow $25 million for the project.
Well, my question is, has that money already been collected in that fund already?
It has not. No, it'll be generated as the building is completed, and it starts generating the tax revenue.
I guess it's kind of confused. You approved it, so they won't be getting any of that money until they pay their property taxes on it when it's complete?
So, what we'll do is, we'll borrow money ahead of collecting all of that, so it'll be over time that we collect that tax. So, we'll borrow money, and as the project is funded, they put capital into it, they've got borrowing, they're borrowing as well. And so, we'll put money into the project. We will not have all the tax money yet, and that's why we had to borrow on this, to be able to give them the money upfront, to be able to help with the construction.
Is the city taking out a loan from a borrowing institution, or are they borrowing from different funds?
So, it's something that we're looking at right now. We're evaluating how we're going to do that, if we're going to do some internal borrowing. It probably will end up being a mix. We'll do some internal borrowing, and a loan from an institution, or possibly selling bonds.
So, the city would be borrowing money from internal sources that could be going somewhere else, I mean, sorry, and then borrowing from lending institutions to make it the money to loan to the First National?
To the project, yes. And generally, what we'll do is, if we use internal sources, it's internal sources that we're using as reserves, where we have reserves that aren't being used or committed right now, that we would need at a later time. And so, it doesn't delay any other projects or anything. So, that's something that we'll evaluate, as we bring that back to the council on a funding plan.
So, they're going to be paying the city back eventually?
It will get paid back through the property tax and the sales tax generated from the property, from the TIF district.
Did they put down any collateral, as a guarantee or anything for that loan?
There's not a collateral. There's a personal guarantee on that. So, we have, we're in first position to be able to collect. If there were some default, we're in first position to be able to collect, because it's tied back to the taxes. But then, we also have personal guarantees from the developers.
Okay. I mean, so they didn't have to put, there's nothing, no guarantee, nothing? So, if it goes bust, the city's on the hook?
The city would have to, we have to do, the city does a backing on this. We do a moral obligation, where if the developers weren't able to pay, if the taxes aren't sufficient to pay, we have a reserve fund that we've built into it, and we have multiple sources out of the project. If for some reason the project wasn't able to pay, we would have the ability to go against the developers on the personal guarantees. And we have reviewed and looked at their financial statements, and their ability to be able to back that. So, we'd be able to go against the developers on that. And then, if we couldn't collect at that time, or if we needed more time to collect, the city would have to help out and pay the debt service on that.
Okay. My next question is, you know, we were talking about the lights in downtown. A lot of the lights that were inoperable, a lot of the time it was just funding to replace them. Is it possible to access the TIF district funds for that, if those lights are in a TIF district, like the MAPS 3?
I think we've got the funding all in place on those. It's really a part of Project 180, and we're going back and replacing some of those. There were some problems with some of the lights. And so, we're in the process, and that is something the city is managing. So, I don't think there's any funding issue with that.
But can the city use TIF district funds to improve, like capital projects, or just improve the overall area?
On TIF number two, I believe, we have the authorization to do infrastructure projects in the downtown area, or within the project area.
Okay. And are the TIF districts, I know there's one, I know Skirvin is a sales tax TIF district. Is there any other sales tax TIF districts in the downtown area?
Well, there are, I know we've got, Kathy may have to help me with this one. I know we've got, Dell has some sales tax with it. The hotel, the Omni Hotel in TIF 13 has some sales tax.
We have a sales tax TIF for the Skirvin, Dell Computers, or the Riverfront TIF district. Devon had a sales tax component. The Omni Hotel has a sales tax component. I think those are the only ones.
The First National.
The First National, yeah.
Now, what percentage of the sales tax goes into that, to those sales tax TIF districts?
The only portion that we're allowed by law to capture in a TIF district is the amount allocated to the general fund. So, up until just recently, that's been 2%, and recently, it went up to 2 and 1/4.
Okay, so 2 and 1/4% of our sales tax in those areas, in the Devon, Tower One, the Skirvin, the Riverfront, and the Dell, the one that usually goes to the general fund is going into those TIF district funds, correct?
Yes, but the one for Devon is not happening anymore. It was just on the construction materials for the tower, so it's completed. So, the only ones that are still ongoing would be the Skirvin and Dell, I think are the only two right now. Omni will.
Omni will, and the First National.
And the Riverfront?
The Dell one, yeah, that's the Riverfront.
Okay, so Dell, Omni, and the Skirvin, correct.
David, we're way past three minutes.
Yeah.
I know Kathy would be happy to stay and answer any questions you've got about.
Yeah, I'll be glad to answer questions.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. Joy Reardon?
This is my first time, so forgive me if I do sound at all. I'm good. I'm good. My voice can get very, very loud, as some people who know me. The two issues that I have, it's two separate issues. One is, I understand that we have better streets, safer city. Why not look at some of the sidewalks that's already there? A prime example, between 23rd and 10th Street on Penn, North Side. If you look down on where the sidewalks are, you've got sidewalks come, and then all of a sudden, you've got a driveway. But ADA rules and stuff doesn't apply, because they're already there. There's multiple streets in the, I'd say from Portland to Lincoln, from about 36th Street to, I'd say about 25th to 29th Street, that the sidewalks, or the older sidewalks, that really need to be upgraded. And the other issue I have, and I'm just going off what the news and everything says, and I talked to the mayor yesterday, is these stupid limes. The police department has no teeth to do anything with them. IMSA, Fire Department, Police Department stuff are getting tired of making calls, getting calls to people who face plant on our city streets. What is it going to take to either regulate it, as the spokes has, to where, is it going to take someone actually running out in front of the streetcar, and getting run over by the streetcar, or something to be actually done about it? Because too many of our citizens, and also our visitors to our city, are getting severely injured. As the city council, if they could get with IMSA, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the ERs around the city, where these little scooters are running, and get some kind of statistics on numbers of people who's actually been brought in by the emergency services.
Now that Lime is actually licensed under our new ordinance, is our injury statistics part of their required data they have to share with us?
I don't know. I'll find out. I'm not sure on that.
And also, I've seen adults and kids on there. I've seen people under the age of 18. Nobody that I've ever seen, and I know y'all's been in Bricktown, no one wears a helmet.
Now, that's not a legal requirement, unfortunately. We don't have...
On the, if y'all read, on the tiller part of the scooters, it says that you're supposed to have a helmet.
Well, that would be something Lime is asking them to do, but we have no, there's no law, helmet law in Oklahoma. So, unfortunately, we couldn't enforce that. That's something...
Then, give the Police Department more teeth to enforce some of the, pass rules and stuff, that people under the age of 18, because what's going to end up happening, and I don't want to see this happening, because I've been a firefighter, EMT, and a rescue tech, is someone's going to end up running out in front of one of the streetcars as they're moving, and they're going to die. And it's also taking away from N-BART on their bike program. Is the city getting any kind of funding from the Lime, I know the birds are gone, but anything from the Lime company that's going to better our city?
All we get from the scooter companies is the permit that they're required to get. There's nothing more. There's no other revenue that we're getting. We're not getting part of their revenue beyond that.
How much is the permit?
I'm not really sure what it is. I think it was like $250, it seems like, for a certain number that they were able to get, but I can confirm that for you.
We also need to take and find out if they are actually above that number. That'll give y'all justification to either go up to that number, or scale it back, because...
And I know on their data, they do provide us, that we have to review periodically the number that we have within the city, and they do have to provide that data to us.
Yeah, that's something we need, I'm going as, I'm also a member of the Oklahoma Safety Council, and it's getting out of hand.
Okay. Well, maybe we can look at all that.
Yep.
Get an update.
If y'all would, please. I'm asking as a person that's also going to school for safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for your patience today.
Oh, I have, I drove a truck for 30 years, so it's, you learn to have patience. And the other thing is, the ADA stuff, if we can kind of gear more of the new projects, as some of the older projects towards the ADAs, because there's a lot of people that are a chair, that would like to get out and enjoy what our rich history of Oklahoma has. It's not just, we need to look to the past to gain what we've owed to the future.
Thank you.
Y'all have a word with that?
Thanks, you too. Ronnie Kirk?
My name is Ronnie Kirk, from Ward 7.
You can pull up that mic, Ronnie.
And the president of Ward 7 Justice District. I come to the council because the council speaks for me. On March the 20th, a marijuana study was released. With the high contents of the THC levels, they had more increase in psychotic diagnosis for mental health. It was on Good Morning America. Michael Strahan spoke on it. On the 29th of March, a research in Denver, they said it had a 10% increase since marijuana had been into law, and psychotic diagnosis. When Merf Fallon, before she went out of office, Governor Merf Fallon went out of office, she declined giving people guns without a permit. When Governor Stig got in, two weeks, I mean, after he got in, he reinstituted it and accepted giving people guns without permits. With a person having a psychotic event, is all they hear is school, school, school. If they think about shooting, they ain't going to think about college. They're going to think about schools. I'd hate for somebody going through all this psychotic mental health that marijuana brings onto them, and they're going with a gun, giving them a gun, when we know that they're going to have psychotic events sometime in their life, giving them this marijuana. So, I've seen people going through a psychotic event. I've seen one recently. They don't care what, they don't know what they're doing. The mind ain't functioning correctly for them at the time they think about something. So, if we know they're going to have a psychotic event sometime in their life from using marijuana or any other kind of drug, why should we give them a gun? Why should they have a gun with no background check, with no training? It's going to affect everybody in Oklahoma. All the people throughout Oklahoma, Oklahoma, they're going to go in, it's going to happen sometime, some states, some city. Why should it happen to us? If you go back, I don't too much know about all these studies and things they'd be having, but I do listen to the news. If we know they're going to have these events, psychotic events sometime in their life from taking drugs, they shouldn't have a gun with no training or background check, just because they're 21 years of age. Pandora's Box... Pandora's Box will never be closed once it's open. Right now, we got a chance to at least try to stop it, because something, they told us about this when we was, when I was in school. So, let's try to stop something we know going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We have our executive session that we previously voted on, and we will handle that and then return.